Called a meeting to order. First I want to bring up Zach Eamon, if you'd come forward. Ask you to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Come right up here to the microphone. Everyone please stand and join with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While you're there, tell us what you're doing tonight.
We're delivering the city council meeting tonight.
And is it for a particular badge?
Yes, sir.
And can you introduce your other troop, the rest of your troop? You want to have them come up front with you?
Yes, sir.
Members, if you would, come up front with you and introduce yourself.
And it is troop 82.
Yes, ma'am.
From First Lutheran.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one at a time.
Okay. Say my name. I'm Zachary Eamon.
Speak into the microphone.
Yeah, speak.
I'm Angus Curry.
Benjamin Parsons.
I'm Duncan Bryson.
I'm Colin Flanagan.
I'm Jason Bowlin.
I'm Jacob Rogers.
I'm Samuel Parsons.
I'm Colby Bula.
Thank you. Scout leader, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening. This is troop 82 based out of First Lutheran Church here in Albemarle. Our troop has about 30 members. The boys that are here tonight are currently working towards a requirement for their citizenship and the community mayor badge. We are a very active troop and particularly within our community. We do a lot of community service through the Y. We also do, we also serve meals at Community Inn. We do trash pickup with the NC DOT program. And it's important to me to get my scouts out in the community, to get them visible and give back to the community, which helps them out as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Absolutely.
Next, we also with us here tonight are Youth and Government from Albemarle Middle School. And I believe I have a, someone from school. You will come up and tell us a little bit about the program?
So this program is sponsored by the Optimus Club in Albemarle. And they're the ones that have been coordinating. And I guess it's been going on for 20 some years now. This is my 10th year doing it. So we coordinate with the teachers to pick kids who come and do some job shadowing. And they learn all about city government.
The students came in this morning and had the opportunity to conduct a mock council meeting. And some of them were assigned to some of the department heads. I'm going to go around and ask each one of them to introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about what they did.
Hi. My name is Zana Blue and I was given this opportunity to shadow the police department of Albemarle. And yeah, I'd like to thank AMS for letting me do this. And I'm really thankful for it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Zachary Schumpf. And I shadowed the head of Parks and Recreation. And yeah, I'd like to thank AMS for doing this for us. It really helps. And yeah, thank you.
All right. Good job.
Hi, my name is Zyko. I shadowed the counselor. And AMS bring me here and help me for career if I don't have a career.
My name is Isaiah Jones. And today I shadowed the city manager. And we learned how to, how a real council meeting would proceed. And I'd like to thank AMS for giving me this opportunity to shadow the city manager.
Hi, my name is Graylan Oliveri. And I got the wonderful opportunity to shadow the public utilities department. And today I got to go to the Highway 52 water treatment plant and learn how our unhealthy, unfiltered water gets turned into pure drinkable water. And this is just a wonderful experience. And thank you to AMS and Ms. Redwine for giving me this opportunity.
Hi, my name is Shailen Riddle. And today I was able to shadow city council and learn how they proceeded in meetings. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Hi, my name is Zana Moore. And I got to mock how the city council makes, does their meetings. And thanks to AMS for letting me do it.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Flake. And I got to forshadow finances. And I got to see how the finances of Stanley County is worked.
My name is Seneca Tao. And I got the chance to shadow one of the city council members. And I think it was a great experience.
My name is Keith Brown. And I shadowed city council over day. I sat in that chair. And thanks to AMS and Mr. Ronnie Michael.
Hi, my name is Mary Grace Kroll. And today what I did was I shadowed the personnel director. And we ran around town and we viewed some of the sites. And I just want to thank AMS for allowing me to have this opportunity.
Did you discuss any particular topic of the council meeting tonight, this morning? Anything you would like to discuss or tell us about? Okay, I will not make you speak anymore. Number three is approval of minutes. Consider approval of February 4 regular session and February 4 closed session minutes. Move approval.
Second. I just would like to add one thing on the regular session. Just at the end of our closed, when we went through and did the discussion, I just would like it notated that I do, I did ask for the company to come speak to us once they had the broadband finished. I just want that noted in the minutes, please.
Mr. Townsend, would you include that in your motion? Ms. Hall, your second.
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hall with that correction. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is the public hearing. The first public hearing is conditional use permit, 1902, to consider a bed and breakfast. This is a little different process. It's quasi judicial process. So we will first have to hear from staff who will introduce this. But when you come up as a witness, we will ask you to be sworn. If you're going to be a witness, you have to be, to have considered standing in this case. To consider where you have standing or not, and basically it has some effect on you or your property. We will ask our attorney to rule if there's any objections or any questions. First I will ask my staff to come up. Kevin, are you going to introduce? No, sir. No, sir, you will come up and introduce. Anyone who's going to care to speak for or against in this additional use permit? If you are, I'd like for you to come forward now too, to be sworn. Anyone who cares to speak for or against in this process? Put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth, the whole truth, and that true self you got. Thank you. No, sir, will you start with introduction?
Just note, I guess we'll be presenting some new evidence into the record at this point in time. The mistake I made for the staff analysis was that it was just another version of the application. So now I'm going to put in my staff analysis, if you guys are okay with it. And the applicant themselves have a slideshow, if you guys are okay with me introducing that.
Before you go to that, I just want you to introduce the property.
Sure. So this is a application for a bed and breakfast at the 427 PD Avenue. Ron Perrine. Okay. And Charity Barbie, the property owners slash people who will be operating the bed and breakfast. Property is zone residential office. It is a conditional use per multifamily, but our residential office allows for conditional uses as a use, as long as you go through conditional use process through R8A. So, long story short, it's allowed conditional use in multifamily and RO allows for the uses in multifamily zoning. There are some restrictions on it. As it currently stands, the operators of the business have to also be the applicants. They can only have up to five beds at a given time, or bedrooms to be utilized as bed and breakfast, and they have to provide off-street parking. So that's the real basic info I got on it.
Oh, just a minute there.
Sure.
Counsel, I need to go through disclosure now that you've heard the introduction. Does anyone have any conflicts or has had any communication on this conditional use permit?
None.
Hearing none, everyone is eligible to continue. Continue, no, sir.
Okay. Can I go to staff analysis, or are we good?
Yes, that's good.
Okay. For the staff analysis, what I'd actually like to do in this instance is I'll let them present their, each individual finding of fact while I will present ours. So now that we've kind of gone over the real basic analysis here of the, of the property, I want to actually go back to the application and show kind of the surrounding uses here. So this is the house. It's largely a single-family Victorian-style house. It is zoned RO. A lot of the properties around it are zoned RO. And then you have the rest over here, multifamily. Down here, it's central business district. So you got a mix of uses in that area, as you can see as I scroll down. And then here's some, here's some pictures for the application of the actual site. They actually have more pictures themselves. This was taken by staff of showing the location, the off-street parking that they will be providing, some buffering that's pre-existing, et cetera, et cetera. So if you don't mind, we'll just jump right into the findings of fact. I'll let them present their, I'll let them present their first case in regards to number one, which it states the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan is submitted and approved. I'll let them read their own response to that question. And then we will also, if they have any additional information that they would like to give, and then we'll just jump straight to staff analysis on that. So your presentation's right here. You want me to go there?
Yeah, let's go right there. Okay. Good evening. I guess the first part is where we want to talk about section 1A, about the public health. It's a single-family dwelling, always has been. It's a two-and-a-half-story Victorian, 3,200 square feet comprised of four bedrooms, three baths, parlor, den. And I think at this point it might be helpful to see the property. So there is the property that we're talking about converting. The parcel is zoned, so Nasser stole some of my thunder by, here's the zoning. We are the blue, which is residential office. The green is multi-use. And the red is, is commercial. We talk about the neighborhood. Section 1A also talks about are we going to be compliant with the neighborhood? Are we going to be a nuisance to the neighborhood? Well, this is the neighborhood. There's our property. Here's the property adjacent to our left. It's an apartment unit, low-income handicapped apartment unit, so I don't think we're going to hurt that. Here's a, here's a street view. I'm across the street taking the residential, going up the street. So the neighborhood to, the next one is in the vicinity. This is on my porch, taking a picture of across the street. I don't think we're going to affect that. This is down the street. I think you guys now own that. So hopefully you can improve that. But that's where, that's again is our, our neighborhood. This of course is the multi-use unit. So everything we feel is well within compliant of mixed use and having something within the vicinity of keeping it a neighborhood community. There's pfeiffer. Okay. Also, 1A also talks about the off-the-street parking. We have gone and invested in off-the-street parking. This is a new driveway that we put in since we've owned the property. Don't look at that guy on the right, he's scary. This is additional part of the guest property driveway. Here is where we're showing some of the parking along with access that they're going to have their own entrance into the B&amp;B. What slide are we on? I don't know, can't tell. 14? Okay. Well, we're on page 2. And here we're talking about where we meet all the conditions. Stop on that?
Yeah, it's conditions. That was his presentation on findings of fact, number one. Staff analysis was that the potential adverse impacts of additional noise, congestion, and traffic may be negligible. The bed and breakfast would be utilized existing residential space. The only increase in use is the addition of an on-premise parking spaces. The parcel in question is surrounded by many parcels that have higher or similar uses. Any questions of staff or of the applicant before we move to the next finding of fact?
Great, move to number two.
Okay, ready for number two. Number two is the use means all required conditions and specifications. And again, I will give it back to, to Ron to illustrate that.
Here we talk about, since we've owned the property, we have gone in front of the county and have met with our regulations for opening a B&amp;B, of which they've required us to, first of all, we've added three bathrooms, so we had to go get permits. But part of the health department requires us to have all these ridiculous sinks for, to serve food. We've already complied with that. So we feel we are in compliance with the building code to run the efficient B&amp;B. Again, we go back to your, your own regulations as far as your 92.076, where it's five bedrooms or less. Here we want to demonstrate that, you know, of the, this is a four-bedroom, of which we're only going to rent out two. So we are well within the five. There is one of the bedrooms, just give you a little bit of a, there's guest bedroom number two. And that's all we have is guest bedroom one and two. Guest bedroom number two. This will be a common area for the parlor. So this is something that the residents will be able to use. Again, parlor, parlor. Took a lot of pictures of the parlor. The dining room, dining room, the foyer, so this is where we'll be checking them in. The rooms will be upstairs. And the foyer. Okay. We are willing to, part of your requirement is the 30-day occupancy limit. We understand that. And we are willing to have a ledger for that, so you can come in and audit it anytime you feel like you need to. How long has this person been here? I think that's a concern from, from the pfeiffer being here. You could have somebody here for months. So we thoroughly agree that you can come in and look at that. Again, it's off-street parking, which we've already discussed. And I think we're back to, back to you.
Yeah, Ron mentioned the 30 days, as it's important to note that the ordinance already has built-in conditions already. If you guys want to add more conditions in the end, you can, as long as it's, you know, relevant to the findings of fact. But staff analysis was renovations being done in the house have been permitted, and all relevant parties have been inspecting the site. That includes building code, and of course, like you said, the health department. And we'll do periodic inspections. The zoning is, again, we'll do final inspections when it's needed. The bed and breakfast shall comply with zoning regulations regarding owner resident operations, limit on guest duration, and providing off-street parking. At the time, at this time, I'm not aware of any final inspections, is that right? County, they haven't finalized inspections yet, but it'll get there by the time they open up. They'll need to get final inspection from all relevant people to sign off. I believe one of those parties, and then again, it goes back to the county health and county building. Do you guys have any questions for anybody?
Nasser, before he goes on, will you make sure that he gets into the mic? Thank you.
Counsel, have any more questions on number two? Let's move on to number three.
Okay. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties or that the use is a public necessity.
Well, I went through those pictures a little too fast. I don't have any really good ones to show you. Other than what we did do is we did, we went online, I'm sorry, and looked at the values of the other homes around us, alongside of us and behind us. The average fair market value was $113,000. Our fair market, when we purchased it, was $186,000. And that does not include the thousands of dollars done improvements. So for that, we don't feel that we are going to hurt any adjoining, or any adjoining, abutting any properties. We've, if nothing else, we've improved the neighborhood. I don't have any pictures to show you.
That is, that is correct. Based on the GIS data for fair market values, based on the county tax assessed department, the average value of all adjoining properties is 113,000. And the assessed value before renovations of the structure is 186,386. So that's the, that's the data we have regarding abutting property values and current property value of the site. And like you said, this is all pre-renovations. Any questions or concerns?
Okay. You want to have any more questions? Let's move on to number four.
Okay. Moving on to number four, the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site, design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics. I will again hand this over to Ron.
I think one of the critical criteria is that we as owners will also be operating the business. That is a true statement. We will do it. I will run the B&amp;B, and Charity has a real job. So she will continue to do her job, and I will continue to do my job. At present, the, the plan is that the bed and breakfast will be open seven days a week. Check-in time at 11:00, check-out time at 3:00. It's typical, we travel a lot, and we always stay in B&amp;Bs, and that's very common. The other part that goes with the package is that breakfast is included to the bed and breakfast, i.e. bread and breakfast. And the fact that it is not open to the general public. It is strictly open only to our guests, which is a requirement of yourselves and of the county. They demonstrated, they obviously have off-street parking, but the key part here is that we are responsible, we will be there, and we will buy breakfast for residents only.
Staff analysis, the structure is a Victorian-era residence. Two of the four bedrooms shall be used as a business while the other two shall be used by the homeowner slash occupant. The business will be run by the homeowner slash occupant. The hours of operations will be seven days a week. Check-in will be 3:00 PM, and check-out will be 11:00 AM, seven days a week. That's, that's what you're looking at for hours of operation. Again, residential structure, pretty straightforward. Any questions from either one of us regarding number four?
Questions, counsel? Thank you.
All right. Last one, number five, be in general conformance, and that was a typo, with adopted plans. And I will again hand this over to Ron.
Basically what we did here is we looked at the zoning requirements of the residential office. We are outside the city limit, properties in a mixed-use neighborhood, and low-impact commercial. We've also looked at, with assistance of the new 2028 land use plan, and it falls under the neighborhood residential with proximity to the city zone and the neighborhood commercial. I do have a slide I want to show you. Where does that go? P? That one? Okay. Did we show you that one already? Okay, this is, this is the aerial view of, of the property. So, and again, here I'm just trying to demonstrate the mixed use, because you've got the vacant lots across the street. And to the left, you have the apartments. And to the right and beyond, you have a regular residential. Slide 25, that's it. Okay.
No, sir, while you're there, clarify, it's not outside the city limits, it's out of the city business district.
I'm sorry, in the city?
He said it was out of the city limit. It's out of the central business district.
Oh, you're right, right. It's outside of central business. Sorry about that, yeah. Right. So the parcel is of course outside the central business district, right outside of it. I actually, you know, I work with the applicant on all these conditional uses. Ron, I, you know, Ron looked at the future land use plan, and I did mention to him that the future land use plan is neighborhood residential. Neighborhood residential are areas intended to provide for residential infill development with a wide range of housing types surrounding the town center area. Town center area is literally downtown area, the current central business district. Incentivizes low-intensity businesses located in mixed-use buildings or buildings designed and constructed at a residential scale and appearance. So development considerations include infill development and existing building patterns. Something else I want to point on here is that this is in somewhat proximity to a neighborhood commercial center. We have a few of these nodes around in the future land use plan. We have a few of them around the city. And the intent behind that is more commercial development in those kind of nodes to service the surrounding neighborhood. He's not too far away from it. And again, he's really not too far away from the city center. So it's a, yeah. Any questions for anyone?
Counsel, before we close the public hearing, one of the things you have to do is you have to decide that the evidence you have gotten is competent, it's material, and it's substantial. And those definitions are in your agenda tonight. Does anyone have any questions or need to ask anyone any more questions before we close the public hearing?
Just, just for counsel, as a reminder, please tell us the vast difference between this ordinance for bed and breakfasts in comparison to what we talked about a few months ago for the Airbnb. What's the major difference between the two?
Well, I believe the air and B&amp;B was, first of all, I think the process is for that, it's a by right use, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct, Kevin? Is Airbnb's by right, or it's a conditional use as well?
Not drastic.
Not drastic. Okay.
It's really about the same?
This is an conventional bed, right? It's not here.
Kevin, come up to the microphone, please.
I can tell you why. It's because we pay taxes, and we have to go to the health department. They do not have to do that.
There you go, there you go.
The definition of this did not change much with the last one. This was around before. It's pretty much still around now. It's not, I think we threw in a couple things about maybe vehicles and the length of time that someone could stay at a zit. You're talking about the Airbnb, which we actually redefine those as a, as kind of a boarding house kind of situation. So it's a little bit different.
Okay.
And that's not what, not what this is.
I think the major difference on bed and breakfasts is you're there. On an Airbnb, they're not. I think that's a major, yeah, a major difference in the two types.
Yeah. Interesting.
Anyone have any more questions? I'll entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Anyone have any more questions? I'll entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We'll move into the findings of fact.
Findings of fact, if you want.
Counsel, we have to move and prove each one on individually. Do you have something else, officer?
So, yeah, you can, you can prove everyone individually, or you can prove it all. What we've been doing for recently, toying around with planning and zoning board is going through affirmatives with these and then making one final swooping motion in the end. But however you guys want to play it, if you guys want to make a motion.
Mr. Beaver, we've always done them individually. Don't you recommend that? Thank you.
Okay.
Your Honor, before we go on any further, there, to staff that are standing in the door, if there are folks out, out there that want to sit down, there are some seats up front. I mean, I mean, I think there's some...
Rules and capacity.
Is it? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The fire mar.
We're coming out.
That's fine. Thank you. I should have asked that to them. Thank you.
I love that. We're coming out.
It's okay.
Number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second. By Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and specifications.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, the proposed use is in harmony with the adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Louder. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number five, be in general conformance with adopted plans, and this will be the future land use plan.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I need a, motion then to approve conditional use permit 1902.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
We're looking forward to seeing you get in operation. Number five, to receive input regarding a possible change to nonpartisan municipal elections. Before I start, is students good for another, how long?
Eight.
Till eight? Okay. We're going to move forward with this, and I want to make a couple of comments to begin with. There's been some discussion at the last meeting to talk about the history of this and the research. I will try to summarize rather than go through all of it. 2007, there was a motion made by, at that time, Councilmember Ed Underwood to change to nonpartisan elections. It failed by four to three. 2010, there was a motion made by Ed Underwood to change to nonpartisan elections. It failed by four to three. 2013, when the majority of this council came on board, one of the things they asked us to do was research the change to nonpartisan. At that turn, at that time, we started the research. And the reason we have the research, had the research, our city's a little unusual. We have an agreement from a court order back in the 80s that had established districts. So we wanted to make sure there was no violation of that. First contact was with the school of government. The school of government said, yes, you can change to nonpartisan elections. They suggested that we should let the court system know that we were going to do that. We contacted the attorney that represented us at that time, and he gave us a price of anywhere from $10,000 to six figures if it was contested when we notified the court. So at that time, council did not move forward. They did instruct, and Mr. Townsend agreed, to talk to the other parties in the, in the lawsuit at that time, the NAACP. And after talking to them, he came back and said they would like to have a letter. We reached out to an attorney, and the attorney said that he would charge about $2,500 roughly to do the letter. So at that time, it basically stopped. All of that was in 2014. There's been some discussion off and on about it since then, and asked me to continue doing some research. I continued doing some research. I reached out to the federal court system. They did not want to give a written opinion, but the verbal opinion was that no one ever came back to do this, that they didn't feel that we needed to come back to the court system. We reached out last to the North Carolina League of Municipalities, who gave us their opinion and also referred us to an attorney they thought was an expert in the matter. That attorney said that there was no requirement to go back to the courts, that we were not under any kind of a voting right act, and there was no monitor to the case, that we did not have to go back to the court at any time. After that, the council has been discussing some at this time, and at last meeting decided to establish this public hearing to hear comments from the public. We have been hearing written comments that was taken during the last week or so. Council has copies of all the written comments that have come in, and tonight we will hear verbal comments. I'll open it up to the floor and declare the public hearing open. I need you to come to the microphone. I need you to give me your name and address loudly where our clerk can get it recorded, and we'll move forward. Hi, Peter Shudo, 154 South, no, that's my store address, 1106, I think Melkor. Anyway, thank you for having this discussion. And what I hope you guys would do, whatever you decide, is that you put this to a vote of the citizens. Because I remember when the county commission went from five members to seven members, that started in Raleigh. And when I was up there to try to stop it, because the county commissioners had voted three to two against the growth of the county commission, they had some hearings. And in those hearings, I think it was High Point and Greensboro, they were looking at changing their election process. But what they were doing is they were having a vote of their people to do it. You know, they, they were putting a referendum up to the people. Anyway, one thing I talk about is what this will do by having a nonpartisan, it opens up the number of candidates really that can run. Because the world is changing. The two-party system is at some point going to be on the way out. It's going to be three, three parties or whatever. If you look at North Carolina, in 2010, this is how it's changed. They've, the Democrats have lost 313,000 registered voters. The Republicans have gained 18,000 registered voters. And independents have gained 617,000 registered voters in North Carolina. There are currently more registered unaffiliated voters in North Carolina than there are Republicans, and Democrats are tops. In Stanley County, it's changing too. Since 2010, the Democratic Party has lost 4,000 registered voters. The Republicans have gained 1,085 voters. And the unaffiliated, they have gained 3,159 voters. Now in Stanley County, there's 2,000 more unaffiliated voters than there are Democratic voters, Democrat voters. And in Albemarle, which is what we're here to discuss, and, and this is a one-year total, in, in one year, the number of Democrats went from 4,095 down to 3,749. So they lost 346 registered voters. The Republicans went from 3,157 down to 3,150. They lost seven registered voters. And the unaffiliated went from 3,085 to 3,140 registered voters and unaffiliated. If this trend continues like it has been, there's 3,140 unaffiliated voters, 3,150 Republicans. So pretty soon, the unaffiliated voters in Albemarle are going to pass the Republicans. And there's 3,749 Democrats. So basically, you have a split of one-third, one-third, and one-third unaffiliated. And also with this process, it makes it fair for anyone to file to run for office. And currently, there's a $10 filing fee. It's not that much for a Democrat or Republican to run for Albemarle City Council. If an unaffiliated person has to run, they have to go get signatures. It's approximately 158 signatures for somebody running at large, approximately 34 signatures for people that are running in, in their districts to get on the ballot. Now, that's just not comparable in time-wise. Why can someone just pay 10 bucks and someone has to, you know, go through the whole signature thing? And basically, that's what I'm saying. Also, if you really look at philosophical differences between the parties, just because someone says they're a Democrat or Republican, it doesn't mean they vote the principles of the party. I mean, just some examples, if you look at some of the local decisions made, the candidates that ran on a certain party are making decisions that are definitely not principles of, of that party. And it's, I don't want to get into all that. But anyway, I thank you so much for your time, and I'm glad you're having this discussion. And hopefully, you guys could put it on, could put it on the ballot. And I know there's one thing that people like this, because they say people need to know, you know, it makes it, to me, it makes for a lazy voter when they just want to look for an R or look for a D, and they don't take the time to actually see what that person stands for. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One more.
To the Honorable Mayor, council members, and all others, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brenda James Stanback, 249 Groves Avenue, here in Albemarle. Years ago, I stood at a council meeting such as this, sharing my concern. And it didn't matter how many voters showed up on election day in my community, we could never elect a council member. Because I, along with others, were told that we were already represented by council, and they thought they were doing a very good job. Their performance at that time was not an issue. Tonight, your performance is not an issue. But my issue is having an African-American or, as some people call us, black, or some that just look like me. That's the issue. And we want people that look like me from my community sitting up here on the council just as we have now. Because the council listened to what I had to say that night, they only listen. Sharon Davis, would you please stand? Titus Stanback, would you stand? And Roosevelt Chuck Horn, along with myself. We initiated a lawsuit against the city of Albemarle 33 years ago for district representation, and we won. You all may be seated. It's not our fault that lines were drawn to lump Democratic African-Americans in the same district and become a majority, thus giving us the power to elect who we want to serve us. But it does my heart good to come to the council meetings and see somebody like me sitting over there on the council. It does my heart even better to know that when you go behind the closed doors, where you're not, where the public cannot come, to know that I have somebody in there representing me. Because I have served on several boards, and I know when we go behind closed doors in the back rooms, sometimes we let loose. And unless we have somebody representing us and speaking on our behalf when you're behind the closed doors, then we lose. There's been evidence in some areas that nonpartisan elections are faulty, because many voters are not, they're so dependent on party labors. And we can't help that. That's just the way it is. They simply won't vote in elections without party labors. Is this what we want? Low turnout so certain candidates can win? Nonpartisanship also tends to produce elected officials who sometimes are more representative of the upper socioeconomic status than of the general population. And it will certainly aggravate the voter turnout. Because in true nonpartisan systems, there's no organization in the Republican and the Democratic Party now, and in all the unaffiliates. And they know when they register unaffiliated, they know what the rules are. But they choose to register as such. But on the election, you have the different parties getting their people out to vote. And if you got a true nonpartisanship, you don't have any organization. And the parties get their people to the polls. Thus, you have a higher turnout. There has been data showing that voters' decisions are influenced strongly by party identification in both partisan and nonpartisan elections. You can put all the names in the world on the ballot and not put a labor on it. But you know, and I know, when we get elected, I don't care what we are, we still, our ideologies still are embedded in us when we serve on these different boards. That's just the way it is. Republicans, Republicans are still going to be Republicans, and Democrats are still going to be Democrats, whether it's on the ballot or not. Thus, render nonpartisan elections ineffective at removing the partisan element. Just because you remove the labor does not mean that you're going to remove what their ideas are. I also disagree with comparing the city of Albemarle with the other cities in size just to make election changes. Our citizens here in Albemarle are very unique. Our problems are different. The other cities don't know our stories, and we don't know theirs. You may know the population, and you may know the cost of their elections or even the turnout. But it's not guaranteed that the city of Albemarle will have the same results. When the nation changes the format of the presidential election from partisan to nonpartisan, then I agree we should make a change. But I'm a firm believer that if it's not broke, don't fix it. Now, all those in here that agree with me, please stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Hey, Baldi.
Hey, Baldi.
James E. Richardson, 520 Wall Street in Albemarle, Honorable Mayor of City Council. I wasn't going to say anything tonight. And I'm just going to share a few words. I don't understand. Like, one time you was on, close the vote down over at the Wadell Center. And now, it seems you were talking about something else. And every time I stand here, the only thing I ask you all to do is do what is right. And this is not right, what you all are trying to do.
Thank you, Bishop Riston.
How y'all doing tonight? Ashley Morgan, 1503 Sunset Avenue here in Albemarle. I felt it was important to come tonight. Not only am I the city of Albemarle representative on the Board of Commissioners here, but I'm also a resident of Albemarle. I'm here to voice my opposition to this. Strongly, I do not support this. I think it puts the voter at a disadvantage, as they have stated in, before me. You're going to have, it turns voters out, turns them off. You know, no matter how you cut it, you want to, some people are going to go off, a Republican or Democrat, no matter how you cut it. You know, with our local races, we, the candidates don't have the money that your congressional or presidential have to get mailers out. So people, so people, that's the only thing they have to go off of a lot of times. They may not know the names, but they know a Republican or Democrat, they can, is going to be how they're going to lean, so they can kind of vote that way. They know that their beliefs align with one way or the other. Now, you have your extremes on both sides, Democrats, Republicans. You got left, you got far left, far right. But this at least gives somebody an idea. When you take that away, what are people going to do? It's just going to be any, many, many, mode. You're going to have no other way of getting... You're going to have no other way of getting the information out. So I'm asking you to table this, or just drop it all together. This is, and this should not be, this should not be what the council decides, no matter whether you vote yes or no to proceed with this. This should be something for the voters, at the very least. This should not be seven people's decision, this should be everyone in the city's decision which way. And I think you'll find that most residents feel that this should not happen. So, thank you for your time.
James Snuggs, 1206 Pineview Street. We're about to pull our Boy Scouts out of here about 8:00 this evening, and I was wondering if I could get you folks to take a moment and explain to these young men exactly what you're going on through here tonight. They were supposed to come in and pick an item off your agenda this evening. Looks like you're going to be running a little wrong, a little long on this, but I want to make sure that they have a full understanding on exactly what you folks are discussing here tonight this time.
Boy Scouts, if you have any questions, feel free to ask me. But the question we call council tonight is whether to change from partisan elections, which is what we're doing now, and basically, when you go to the voter poll, you see a Republican or a Democrat, or to go to nonpartisan, when you go to the polls, you will see no Republican or Democrat, you'll vote without having that aid. Do you have any question about what that is? If you do, please ask me. That will be something else the council would have to decide if they decide to go forward. There's more than one way you can do it. I assume, and I, we have not discussed this, the plurality method would be assumed what our council would look for, and if that is, that would do away with primaries. Now, there is a method where you can do, you can keep the primaries, so it would totally be up to council if they decide to move forward at all. Anything else, Boy Scouts? I'll continue with the public hearing then.
I'm Mark Louder, 714 Eastwood Drive here in Alamo. Mr. Mayor, council members, I ask that you not make any change in the way that elections are held here in the city of Alamo. The party label is an important part of information that voters can get and have available to them now. The absence of that party label, and the party label, I'm talking about the R, the D, the I behind the name, if, without that, can lead to confusion among the voters. Imagine a voter that goes into the voting booth and just does not know any of the names that are for a particular race. How do they make a meaningful choice on their ballot? How do they make it meaningful, that is, to them? For candidates, having that party label behind your name, that speaks volumes about the approach to government, and how government treats its people, and how decisions are made regarding the size and scope of government. To deny voters that information, that pertinent information, basically just leads to a blurry distinction among a number of candidates. Years ago, back when the Democrats had the majority in Raleigh, you remember that they made judicial elections nonpartisan? Now, think about those succeeding elections, those ballots. Do you remember how those came out and there was myriad number of names? Did you know any of them? I know a lot of people didn't, because they would call me up and ask me, did I know any of them, or did I recommend any of them? I don't want that here in the city. Because again, if you cannot make a distinction between candidates, how are you going to make a meaningful choice? Sometimes the distinction is only, I recognize the party and what they stand for. Now, thankfully, our last legislature fixed that problem, and it took a Republican majority to do it. But here, locally, we have a new group of council members. Many of you have been on before, but it's a new grouping. And I think, I can't recall seeing as many Republicans seated on the council as I do today. Maybe in my lifetime I haven't seen the number of Republicans that are seated today. So the question is, why is this issue coming up today? It is not a coincidence. It is not a coincidence, because there are some Democrats that think there are too many Republicans on the council. So I ask you not to take any action to change the way that we elect our officials in the But regardless of what you do, remember this, every election is partisan. You can yell all day long, "nonpartisan, nonpartisan, nonpartisan," but it doesn't change the fact that every election is partisan. Now, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, I'm Leah Robinson, 439 PD Avenue. I'm here tonight as a resident of the city of Alamo to show support in favor of the nonpartisan elections. Having a nonpartisan election allows candidates to define themselves as individuals, what is the most beneficial on the local level. While people may be different sides politically, most local decisions that you guys vote on don't require a party affiliation to determine the outcome. We work better on the local level when we try to find a solution rather than make a decision based on party affiliation. I think those without any party affiliation should have the option to bring their ideas to the table. We need as many voices as possible to be represented in the city of Alamo, allowing nonpartisan election enables more people to step forward and be heard. I also don't know if anybody else said this tonight, but we're only one of eight municipalities in the state of North Carolina that still has nonpartisan elections. I know that, you know, people have spoken before and said we shouldn't get into, you know, comparing ourselves to others, but I think that speaks volumes, that, you know, other municipalities in the state have already gone through this process, you know? Let's look at this as a whole. I also agree, you know, I think maybe this should be voted on, but I also think that we're here tonight to show this, and I was a registered Republican when I came to Alamo and switched to independent, so the first gentleman that got up, he's correct, that there are people that are going in a different direction. And I don't think just because something's always been this way that it should continue to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pause the public hearing for just a moment, because our students need to leave.
Bye, guys. You're so welcome. You're so welcome. And you weren't as bad as you thought it was going to be. Nice to meet you. Nice to get a picture made. Chris, was that David Scarborough?
Brenda died.
Brenda died. She did, she just had a stroke as a result of that knee surgery?
She had a knee operation Friday morning and had a stroke Friday.
Okay, we will resume the public hearing. Anyone else care to speak?
Rebecca Askew, 629 Yadkin Street. So, if this question had been presented a year ago, I would have shrugged it off. I know quite a few of our city council members, and if you talk to any of them at length, they will all, they're all a broken record. They will bore you to tears with how well they work together, and they work across party lines, blah, 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 the best city council around. But my eyes were really open this summer and fall when I had my first true experience in politics. I spent every single day of early voting at the polls, and I spent election day at AMS and Southside Fire Department. I learned that day that the person doesn't matter at all in Stanley County, it was only about what party someone was affiliated with. I was working very hard to get both Jeff Crisco and Dr. Elaine Coats elected. I talked to people at length about how much Dr. Coats had cared for their kids, and how important she had been to them, and how much she meant to them, but when they heard she was a Democrat, they were done. They were not interested in voting for her despite how much they cared about her, and how much they appreciated her care, and thought she had some good experience to bring as we deal with the opioids here. I also talked to a lot of people who said, "I will not vote for Jeff Crisco, I'm not voting for a Republican." And I explained that while maybe he's a great guy, Sonny Hinson didn't actually have any experience, didn't really, he wasn't involved in our community, and so many other things, but that was that. They didn't care. As long as he was a Democrat, they were going to vote for Sonny. So I think that it's sad to see that even if someone has a personal relationship, or they have the right experience, it doesn't matter here. But, this is a lovely story, but I'm an economics major, so I care about data, and like Leah mentioned, we, there are only 2% of the cities in all of North Carolina, less than 2%, are operating on a partisan city council. I also looked across the whole country, and the top 30 largest cities, only eight of those are operating in a bipartisan, and if you look at those compared to the top 100 efficient cities, only two of them fall into that. So, I think that, you know, that shows us that these cities that are working in this new line of being nonpartisan are working well, they're very efficient. And I've heard what people say, that the D and the R help you know who to vote for, but that's absurd to me. I think it's up to us to do the research. If you don't learn about the people, if you walk into vote without doing any research, you're not taking your voting responsibility seriously at all. It's up to you to know who to vote for. There's information out there, there are people to talk to, find that candidate and ask them about what they believe in if you don't know who to vote for.
Thank you.
I'm Colleen Conroy, I live at 944 North 10th Street here in Alamo. I have been a Republican, I've been a Democrat, I've been independent. It is vital that all people have a voice, and I understand and applaud Ms. Stanback's position, but this isn't going to change the districts. People would still have their same districts, and it is very important that African-American people and Asian-American people have a voice, and Mexican-American people have a voice. But it is our responsibility to look at who the candidate is. I challenge people to look on council and tell who's a Democrat and who's a Republican, because these people work well together. And partisan politics has no place in local government. It is vital that everyone work together, and it doesn't matter in local government if there's an R behind your name, or a D behind your name, or an I. Because the people are supposed to be, the representatives are supposed to be, and you all are, working for the best interest of every citizen in Alamo. And if people are so lazy that they won't look at who is running and what their qualifications are, and only vote because there's an R or a D, then we're in sad shape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim Scott, 2020 Mountain Creek Road. I don't want to repeat what's already been said, because you've already heard, but I will not say that people are lazy. It's the fact that we're getting older here in Alamo, and the people that are older, they don't have all the luxuries that most of the young people have to get out and see who's running for office. But they also have the fact that we in Alamo are different, and we are unique. We have to use what works together for us. But going bipartisan, nonpartisan, may not work for us, but we don't believe that it will. We believe that in our community, if you take it away from us, then there, we would not have our minority representation. We would not have the information that the city has to trickle down to us. We would not find out what is going on in the city of Alamo. We realize that when you go nonpartisan, yes, you do have a lot of people running, but then it turns into a popularity contest of who you like, not what they can do for you, and not what they can do for your community, what they can do for your district. We also have to realize that when you go nonpartisan, that it turns into also a socio-economical background for people that are running. It runs for who's got the money, and that's all the looks they look at. Because not what you can do for my community, not what you can do for me, but what I can do for myself. We have to realize that we are the city of Alamo, and we will stand strong, we cannot take a step back, we have to keep moving forward. We have to become and stay unique. We don't have to join other cities to be like they are. We can have our whole light heads up high, and I want to be proud to say that I live in Alamo, North Carolina, and my council listens to the people. They don't make, they don't have a hidden agenda, but they listen to what we need as the city of Alamo citizens and what we want. Thank you.
My name is Rodrick Howell, I stay at 304 Leonard Avenue. One of the things that I have opponents against this is, because this is, this seems like an ad for more progressive cities. In Stanley County, we're still pushing for diversity in, like, even getting Martin Luther King to be integrated. Something like this, when I look at the North Carolina City, I mean, I mean, not North Carolina, but the League of Cities, they say that one of the biggest things is that people tend to vote for their last name. We still vote by, if you don't have a primary election, which you get to introduce the candidates, and we have to go into, people are going to choose by people, family that they're associated with, and not by people that are actually for, that's going to select their city. So if we, if we go forward this, it needs to be put to a vote for the people so we can have more hearsay. We have a low, when it comes to voting overall, there's a lot of apathy within my generation when it comes to voting. A lot of people do not come to these meetings and find out what's going in the city, and within our community, as Ms. Brenner spoke, we learn from the pillars of our community on how we should vote. So for Stanley County, as we are learning, if you take away the way that we're voting, if you look at the voting patterns, we still vote in districts, and we still vote by political party. This is a great idea if this was a more progressive city, but I don't think it fits Stanley County or, not Stanley County, but it don't fit the city of Alamo at this moment.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have to commend this council on taking on tough issues, stepping out of the box, and giving careful and truthful looks at what you are elected to do, and that is to represent the people. The people put you in here, and the people expect you to look at every situation that comes up that could affect them either positively or negatively, and make the right decision. In Stanley County, there are nine municipalities that are nonpartisan plurality. We are the only municipality in Stanley County that is partisan. I agree with everything that everybody has said here, but we have to look at it in the big picture. Nobody wants to get disenfranchised at all. We need to make sure that everybody has a voice, and that every voice has an ear that can listen and make a good decision. There is no room in local politics, and I'm going to reference a council member quickly in his comments in the newspaper. There's, this is not, and partisan politics has no place in local government. And as so aptly said by a lot of people, is that the issues that we face affect us as citizens of this community and the voting public. So therefore, we have to look at every issue that comes up. So therefore, we have to look at every issue that comes up and do our due diligence to make sure that it's being addressed properly, effectively, and fairly. The unaffiliated voter seems right now to take a backseat in a lot of our conversations in terms of how they're perceived, how they're not perceived, but they are disenfranchised. They do not have the same opportunity as you had to go up to the Board of Elections, pay $10, get your name on the ballot, be it D or R or whatever else. This is not fair. There's a third of our community that is unaffiliated. There are a lot of good people out there in every district in the city of Albemarle and that could run. And yes, you can have a lot of people on the ballot. And the way that plurality works, be it one person, two people, or five, it's the top vote getter. Be it one by 100 votes or one vote, it's over, it's done. As the mayor said, there are four different ways that you can use nonpartisan. And that will be, if this moves forward, that will be up to you guys to decide how to go about doing it. And I do agree with what I've heard thus far, is it needs to go to the people. We're the ones that have the voice, we're the ones that have the concerns, and we're the ones that want the best for Albemarle. And in the last five years, we've seen the best of Albemarle and what it could be. It just didn't happen. It took hard work, it took making decisions, and progress is not cheap. It costs money to be progressive. Don't care whether you've got an R or a D behind your name, you've got to make those decisions, and I compliment this council on being able to do that objectively and honestly and transparently. I would suggest that, as Peter alluded to, you go into the people. And they're not, they're not wrong. They're going to be right more times than not. And you can go out and say, there's 562 municipalities and cities that are nonpartisan. If that's, that is a true number, so therefore, there's a lot of good things that may happen there. If it wasn't happening, there'd be 562 communities on the other side. So there's, if you look for the worst, you're going to find the worst. If you look for the best, there's a, there's a, there's a little place called in the middle that's going to work for everybody. And we've got to make sure that we do our, that you do your due diligence and make your choices effectively, make them transparently. And I think that nonpartisan gives us something extra to look at, to make sure that we are doing everything that we can do to ensure that we are taking partisanship out of the local government. Thank you.
Put your name and address there.
Benton Dry, 503 Wesley Heights Drive, Albemarle.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Good evening. Phil Burr, 4643 Suppan Lane, Norwood. I don't live in Albemarle, but I am chairman of the Republican Party, and I wanted to just state our opposition to this. And Representative Sasser called this morning, called me personally to let me know that he is opposed to this also. He wanted to relay that to the council. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Brenda James Stanback, again, 249 Rose Avenue, Albemarle. I have an observation. And I'm not really calling anybody out, but it seems to me that now that we have the majority of the Republicans on the council, and I've been to council meetings, it's seen that you all are working together, and I don't see what the issue is, except now that, since the Republicans are the majority, now all of a sudden, we need to have nonpartisan. That's just my observation.
Thank you. Anyone else care to?
And I am a Democrat.
Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Jennifer Miller. I live at 823 North 6th Street in Albemarle. I was not planning on getting up and speaking tonight, but I just want to say that I'm a registered Democrat. I have voted for unaffiliated Republican, Democrat on the local ballot. Doesn't matter to me when it comes to city council. I'm a former journalist for 15 years. I have sat through many city council, planning and zoning, school board meetings, too many than, more than I'd like to remember. And just in my experience, on the local level, it doesn't really matter what your party affiliate is, you can all work together. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Fran Allbritton. I reside at 20683 Running Creek Church Road, Locust. Although I'm not a citizen of Albemarle, I do have a position. My good friend Mark Lauter, who spoke to you earlier this evening, I pretty much agree with him and his statement, his understanding of this so-called nonpartisan that you're trying to get changed. My view is, we should stay where we are as a partisan, that we will give the candidates an opportunity to identify themselves, as has been stated here earlier this evening. So that is my position. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Thomas Townsend. I live at 36534 Norwood. Everything that happens in the city still affects all of Stanley County, and that's why I came up to speak. In this chamber, you have a lot of Democrats. You have quite a few Republicans have spoken out. You've got a big bipartisan majority tonight that have asked you not to go forward with this. Think you need to listen to the people, and if you do anything at all, please do put it before the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hold on, I've got one more.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I am Easton West, 912 North Levitt Street in Albemarle. I've been a resident of the city of Albemarle for about 40-some years now. And up until this last election, I've seen the council come and go. And this last group that we had, I think, was the best city council that I can ever remember us having. I was not going to speak, I was just going to listen until I saw Mr. Benton Dry come up. In my opinion, Benton was one of the best city council people we've ever had. Also, in my opinion, and opinions are cheap, that I think he was dropped off the city council for this term simply because he was a Democrat. I happen to be unaffiliated. I have switched back and forth simply because I felt like that by doing that, that I could probably vote for the person that I thought was the most qualified. Not for the best Republican, not for the best Democrat, not for the best unaffiliated, but for the best person that was good for Albemarle and all of its citizens. I hate to see us lose what we've already had, but I still think that an individual, qualified voter could do whatever research they needed to do to make sure that they were voting for the right candidate, whether there was a D or R or neither behind their name. And I commend you for considering this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Bramlett to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, I'll open it up for discussion. If you want to discuss, if you want to delay any decision and discuss it at a later date, that's up to you two.
Do you want a motion before you go into discussion, or is this open discussion based on the?
However, council wants to move forward.
After what I've heard tonight, I'd at least like until next meeting to digest all of this. It's been a little bit of a surprise to me that there was this much interest and this much bipartisanship, I guess is the word. I'd really like to have another, a little more time to consider it.
Mayor, without going into too much discussion with the particulars of this matter, based on what the people said tonight, and actually, I had that exact same idea prior to coming in here. When matters of this importance came before the city of Albemarle before, in previous years, the last big issue that I recall that separated us as a community was the ABC referendum. And that was some years back, I don't recall the exact years, but I do recall Mr. CB Crook, Mr. Art Rogers, coming before council and asking the council, instead of taking a vote amongst themselves, to put up a referendum to the people, to the citizens of Albemarle. This issue tonight had brought 15 individuals out for a public hearing. That's one of the most well-attended public hearings that I've heard since I've been sitting on this council. And I don't, me personally, I would like to see us at least consider putting this to a public referendum before we, as a council, take a vote on this matter.
That's okay with me, any way we do it, but let's do it. It seems to me, I don't mean tonight, but I mean real soon. We have spent 12 years talking about it, if I'm counting it correctly.
That's correct.
And we never have come to a decision, except to leave it like it is. We've had so many opportunities, so many opportunities. I know when Whit- Whitley was the mayor, he had to break the tie in favor of leaving it like it was. Now, whether or not we think we're over the NAACP ruling or not, this council needs to be for sure, because I don't want to face the, I don't want to face them. They're too smart for me. Now, we decided at Martin Luther King breakfast, y'all are not black, you're brown, and we are not white, we're pink. If we can get that in our head, we might get started doing business. But I know in one, one of the council of government, or one of somebody in that office said, you might can get things done for $10,000 if the NAACP agrees. Now, if they don't agree, it could be into the six figures. Now, do we want that? And that is a possibility, I do believe. I don't think anybody can tell us tonight. If you can, please stand up and tell us that that's not a possibility.
I just have a question, I guess, to Dexter, Councilmember Townsend's question. To put it up for the citizens of the city to vote, does, how, I mean, educate me, what time period, how does that work? Is that something?
If council wishes to proceed that way, and that's the direction they give us, we'll go to the Board of Elections and talk to them. I would think the earliest they would be put on would be the next general election, I would think.
Which would be next?
November of 2020, I would think.
Okay. I just, for me, just some clarification on what kind of time period?
If that's what council directs, we'll go to the Board of Education, Board of Elections and find out.
I like what Dexter proposed.
Further discussion?
I think that'd be the way to go.
I just, I want some clarify, I need some clarification. I'd like to make some, a statement of clarification. And Ms. Stanback, when you were making your comments to open up, I took my notes, and I just happened to take my notes on the back of the order from 1988. And I was showing these young people sitting behind me that when you had your other petitioner stand up, I mean, I showed the kids behind me, these folks are out here. The one thing that I want to make, or clarity on, and I think I have clarity on, I think I have clarity on now because of this, this federal lawsuit that was signed, as funny as this may be, or ironic, it was signed the 19th day of February. So tomorrow would be 31 years ago it was signed. It makes, and I made this comment the last time we talked about this, four weeks ago, there is nothing in that federal order signed by a federal judge about partisan or nonpartisan. The only thing it has to deal with is districts. We are sitting up here now with four districts. That's what, and this partisan, nonpartisan will not deal with that. I have missed very, very, very few meetings since I was first elected to the council. The one meeting that I missed was the night that Whit- Whitley had to vote to make it one or the other. That was very interesting, whenever the comment came up that night, let us wait till everybody's here, and they moved on without doing it. And I think everybody here on council and anyone else who has read those minutes would realize that. I think the partisan thing is something that, yes, has been talked about. I think the comment that someone made, and I probably can go back to my notes and find this out, a couple people referenced that we have. Mr. Townsend, you may have mentioned it, I know that Mr. Dry mentioned it.
I haven't got into specifics yet, but, you know, I thought we was gonna go.
It's that we have nine other municipalities in the county that are nonpartisan. Eight of them are nonpartisan. Just making those comments.
Further questions, comments? Counsel, what's your desire?
Motion's in order.
Two.
I heard you say, hold off on it for the next meeting.
I make a motion that we approach the Board of Elections about considering a referendum to make Albemarle, let the citizens decide whether or not Albemarle should be partisan or nonpartisan.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
I need you to raise hands, please. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion fails.
I figured it. Okay, so I'm ready to go into specifics.
Further comments or discussions?
Based on what we've heard tonight, I would table, I would move that we table.
Can't table something that's not there.
Yeah, this issue, the issue before us can be tabled. And I stand to be corrected if you want to bring out Robert's rules, but I believe the issue of partisan and nonpartisan can be tabled.
Usually, you table the motion, according to Robert's rules.
Right. Table the motion for the issue of nonpartisan, partisan. But that's what I heard.
There is no motion to table. You're asking to continue the issue.
I heard.
Ms. Bieber, am I correct?
Mr. Bramlett mentioned that. Right.
Let's don't decide tonight.
Okay. I think that's what I'm hearing from Ms. Howes.
That's what she's saying.
So then, if you don't want to table, then we continue this, not continue the public hearing, because the public hearing is closed.
The public hearing is already closed.
I'm in favor of continuing the discussion, but I do want to make some clarification on a few things. I know everybody tends to allude to the fact that this agreement between the NAACP and the city of Albemarle back in 1988 was only about district representation. Yes, it's sad, it's a sad day, whenever the NAACP had to take that action in order to get representation, but this, this matter is far more than just maintaining the districts. If you go to nonpartisan, I'm gonna paint a picture for you. Prior, first of all, city of Albemarle is around 160-some years old, you know, and it's 2019. And in 160-some years, you done had three African-Americans to serve on this council. No kind of... No kind of commissioners up to this point, however old they are. But if we proceed in this manner, it's sad to say that if we go in nonpartisan, yes, you still have your districts, but any of you can represent your districts and go on a nonpartisan ballot, and you not at risk. But we got one centrally populated minority district in the city of Alamoor. And if you, if you stack that ballot with what we known in Alamoor and Stanley County for is political trickery, is stacking that ballot, knowing that we got, knowing that we got low voter turnout, not just in the city of Alamoor, but throughout entire Stanley County, through almost elections of that nature, you might have 30%, 30% to 40% turnout, you know, and you stack that ballot, yes, we the only ones that could be impacted by having no representation, having a seat at the table, enclosed session, open session, or whatever, you know. So that's why I got issues, and that's the only difference that you don't see on paper.
Further discussion?
Just say one thing, Dexter, I kind of disagree with your logic, I respect it, but when I was on the Board of Education, I was on there for three terms, and we were nonpartisan at that time. And I was extremely fortunate to be able to serve the needle in the sky.
That's county.
We were running countywide, nonpartisan. I mean, think about getting elected countywide, and she did it twice. And she could have done it again if she wanted to, but she got smart and got out.
Mayor, can I state these numbers here? Since you gave us the voter statistics at the meeting back in January, and in between now, I'm just gonna tell you these numbers here. Since January to now, only in the city of Alamoor, we got 46 new registered voters in the city of Alamoor. Thirteen out of the 46 came from District One. Out of that District One, we got six new Democrats, one new Republican, six new unaffiliated, but the same number of blacks, you know, none, no blacks changed their party affiliation. District Number Two had two new Democrats, five new Republicans, one new unaffiliated. District Three, 14 new Republicans and one less unaffiliated voter than we had a month ago. District Four, one less Democrat, four new Republicans, seven new unaffiliated voters. All that within a one-month time, when we don't have no elections on the ballot, and you telling me that is no political trickery. We got issues.
Further discussion? Are you gonna continue?
I move we continue this issue until...
A later date.
A later date.
You want to give us some?
I would like to go ahead and do it the first meeting in March.
Yeah, we need, we need, first of all, I want to thank everybody that spoke, whether you're for it, whether you're against it, it takes a lot to come out and be involved, and that's what this community is all about. You know, regardless if you're again for it, or if you're against it, you coming out and speaking your voice is unfortunate, because I've been on this council since 2014, and the only time we really see community involvement, community interaction, is when there's a topic like this. And so I want this to be a catalyst to bring everybody out. If you, if, we're one of seven people, and if we don't know what the community thinks, we don't, we don't know, we don't, we don't know. You know, I can't, we're not perfect. Somebody, somebody made a comment several months ago, and they said, when they looked at the city of Alamoor, city council, they couldn't tell if they were Republicans or Democrats. And I said, you know what, what a great concept, because we, as the seven people that sat up here, we don't go in those back rooms and go, are you Republican or you Democrat? What do you think about this? What do you think about that? We talk about paving streets. We talk about our city employees. We talk about providing the equipment and the necessary items that we need to provide the best for all of our residents, not just people that live over here, people that live over there. We're all citizens of Alamoor. You know, and when you, and when you look at, when you look at, there's 552 municipalities in North Carolina, and we're one of eight, seven or eight that are still partisan, you know? I mean, this, this is, this is 2019, and if you're going, if you're going out to vote, okay, whether it's Republican or whether it's Democrat, you need to be educated, you need to do your due diligence, research that candidate. Because I'll tell you right now, I'm a registered Democrat. Do I agree with everything the Democrats do? Absolutely not. There's a lot of Republican ideas I support. But at the end of the day, before I'm gonna go in that ballot box and check my, check off somebody, you can bet your bottom dollar, I'm gonna do research. And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick whoever I feel is the best candidate for that position. If they've got an R behind their name, and I feel like they're the best person, I'm gonna vote for them. If I feel like they've got a D, I'm gonna vote for them. So, I mean, again, this is 2019. Before, before anybody here goes out and buys a product for your house, I promise you, you go out and research it. Before you go out and buy a car, you're gonna do all the research. And just, just by going in a booth, and just looking for the R, and looking for the D, and checking it off, I mean, I, again, I may not get reelected, I'm up, I'm up in 2020, okay? The good news for me is, I don't even, I don't know that I will run again. I may or may not. But the only thing I want, the only thing I want to have accomplished, if I do, if I don't decide to run, is that I left this city in better shape than what I founded. And that's for the Republicans, that's for the Democrats, that's for everybody out there, okay? That's all I got.
All right, I got a motion on the floor, and do I have a second? Motion to table this at the first meeting in March.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Continue discussion.
Just, before they lose my train of thought, one more thing I did want to jump in and say, the, so many people have made a big issue about being an R or D, and that really saying something about the candidate. I, you know, it bothers me some that people, and I know they are, would vote for me because I'm a Republican, or vote against me because I'm a Republican. Because I can tell you, that tells you very little about how I'm gonna vote on things. When we have an issue that comes up, I don't go run to somebody and ask them how I should vote. I don't check with anybody, you know, so, you know, in districts our size, that are so small, generally we know most people, or can find out who they are. There was a couple, I'm gonna be brief, I was getting ready for the night, getting some stuff, I looked over, a little background information, there was an article that I found, and I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. The, a little history during the last century, apparently, and I was not politically involved in, there was a movement in North Carolina to de-politicize municipalities, and take them away from the back room, you know, ward bosses and that kind of thing, and make cities operate a little more professionally, a little more businesslike. And I think if you look at cities, you can tell that. They have professional management, and it apparently has worked. So the city governments in North Carolina are some of the best in the country, most efficient. They're rarely scandals, they have the most AAA bond ratings of any cities in the country. But one thing I wanted to mention, one comment in this article, was, in an era when national government is increasingly partisan and dysfunctional, and state government seems headed down the same path, municipal governments still work. And apparently 99% of our counterparts across state agree with us, so.
Just, just, I got another comment, Mayor, just to add to what I didn't, I failed to mention a minute ago. You know, I think that, I think that on a local level, the decisions that we as a city council make up here, we're not at the state level, we're not at the federal level. You know, I get a lot of, I get a lot of phone calls about the traffic situation in front of Walmart. Had two today. When they gonna get that road out there fixed? And that conversation was, and I didn't ask that guy, I didn't say, are you Republican or Democrat? Let me know, so I can, so I can go to work for you. He didn't, he didn't, and he didn't even ask me what I was, what my registration was. He said, I need your help. We've got an issue out there. Now, the good news for us is, that's a state situation, not a, not a city situation. But the decisions that we make up here, that affect local people, are just that, they're local people, okay? When you look at our school board, our school board now is partisan. Well, when you look at the numbers of the county, how would a Democrat ever get elected to that?
How would a minority?
They can't. They can't. What was the, what is the need? And I know this is a kind of a different subject there, but I think it's important to talk about, when you, when you partisan things that don't need to be partisan, you get deadlock, you get gridlock.
Mayor, one more comment, if you don't mind. Ms. Stanback made a statement earlier when she was up speaking, talking about prior council to, prior to this lawsuit, and she said that they made the statement, they thought they had been representing the needs of the African-American community well. And yes, I believe every one of us work good together as a council. I've never, just like Mr. Aldrich said, I've never went in the room or came out here and questioned whether or not it's a Democrat issue or Republican issue, but we have certain things, and especially from a minority standpoint, that you all can't bring to the table. I'll give you an example. Last year, when all of us was back there doing budget meeting, and we had to list our priorities, you know, there's one item that, on that list, about 20 items, that I'm the only one that listed it. I'm the only one that had a concern for improving citywide employment diversity. So that's, that's an example in itself. You all don't think about stuff like that. You know, whenever my constituents used to come into City Hall, they didn't see fabric of the community, they didn't see people that represented them in Taj Mahal. You know, that's what it's called in, you know, in theory. You know, but they didn't see no African-American members, but one person prior to about three, three years ago. You know, it's issues like that that you all just can't bring to the table.
Yes, sir.
I find myself in a most unusual situation here this evening, because I live in District Number Eight, and I'm finding myself sort of siding with you folks out there, knowing full well that have you voted for me, and probably won't, and probably won't. So I guess, I guess with that in mind, I'm still, I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that. But, but when Bill says that the voice of the people is being heard, and we need to hear the voice of the people, I can think of no better way to get that voice than a referendum, Bill, I said. I know of no better way.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Any information you would like for us to bring back to that meeting?
We just need to think and talk among ourselves and among the public, and bring back those thoughts.
Mayor, if I may, I want to ask, for those of you who are watching, or who will be hearing this, or reading this in the newspaper, or listening on the radio, this is, this conversation is gonna carry on. And as, as a citizen of Alamoor, let your voices be heard. You know, blow, blow this thing up. You know, you got my, you can go on our city website, and we get our email addresses, email us, let me, let us know what your thoughts are, okay? So, I mean, that's what, that's what this thing is all about. We're just up here representing you, the people. So let us know what your thoughts are.
Thank you. Moving on, I have no agenda, agenda adjustments. Announced allegations, Ms. Lori Randolph to request a peddler's license.
Y'all, as that, as they're coming up and folks are leaving, may we take a three-minute break?
First, see if she's here.
My computer's gonna blow up.
Did you get an answer? No, I didn't. Is that Ms. Randolph?
Come on, let's finish Ms. Randolph, then we will.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Hello?
We're gonna finish, we'll hear her then.
Oh, okay. It's just I knew there were gonna be a lot of people leaving.
I crashed.
Get Owen. I'll get Owen in a minute.
Y'all up here, while you're here, Brenda Scarborough died tonight.
Brenda Scarborough just passed away.
Oh, no. David Scarborough. Okay, let's move on, Ms. Randolph.
Yes.
Tell us what you want to do.
My brother and I have a homemade ice cream business, and we've been in business for the past 10 years. We have an ice cream boat out on Lake Tillery, and we're hoping, we're wanting to expand and come into the city of Alamoor and sell out of a van, our ice cream van.
Did you have a, did you have an ice cream shop down?
We did, on Five Points. We did for a year or so, yes.
Have you already talked with Health Department, you've cleared all that?
I have, yes.
Everything will be prepackaged?
Everything will be prepackaged.
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We're gonna take about a two-minute break.
Just two.
All right, let's call a meeting back to order and keep moving. Our next agenda item is Dr. Jeff James, Stanley County School Superintendent, to update the city on the system activities. Mr. James?
Good evening, Mayor Michaels and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight to talk about some of the great things that are going on in Stanley County schools, and more specifically in our city schools. So, East Alamoor Elementary School, here's some demographics on the school, you can look through those, I won't read them to you. But I will want to hit on some high points here. If you recall, East Alamoor Elementary was a D school at one time, an F school. The grading system in the state of North Carolina is A to F. I will challenge anyone that's in the room, do a little research on that. There's 25 years' worth of historical data that basically tells you the A to F grading system, just tells you where poverty is or is not. The schools that are an A or B in the state of North Carolina have less than 50% poverty, the schools that are a C or D or F have greater than 50% poverty. So basically, the A to F grading system is not like what we had in school that told us if we were doing good or not, it just tells you where poverty's at. That's hard to explain to the general public, but again, we're graded on that, so my goal is to ensure you that we have no D schools. With the demographics in our county, and even with the poverty we have, our educators can do better than that, and our challenge is to do better than that. If you look at the ranking of schools across the state, out of 100 counties, we ranked 58 academically. We probably should be somewhere between 30, 35 in the academic ranking. So that is one of our strategic goals that we are working toward, and there's a lot of great things going on. I'll mention some of those here tonight. But I want to talk a little bit about East Alamoor Elementary School. They moved to a C, it's the highest performance they've had in three years, and they exceeded growth by 3.54%. So I'll put that in perspective. That is actually, each student really received about a year and a half worth of growth in their grade level. So the index, you never want to see a school in double negative growth index. If you see a school that's double positive, they're doing wonderful things, they're exceeding growth, and that means they're catching kids up almost a half a year to a year above the grade level. So if I'm in third grade, and I have an index of positive 3.54, I'm actually almost getting a year's worth of education plus another half year. So we know from poverty, that students in poverty typically starting kindergarten, have only 2,500 words in their vocabulary versus a student who's not in poverty of 25,000. So I would challenge any of y'all to catch a student up that's only got 2,500-word exposure to the student that comes in with 25,000, and that's what we face every day in our classrooms. So it can be done, and we are doing it. But the growth at East Alamoor Elementary was a top 15% in the state of North Carolina. So great things are going on. If you have not visited the school, I ask you if you would, to at least take time out of your busy schedule to stop by. We've done a lot of improvements this summer with the parking lot and inside the school, and to me, it's a breath of fresh air every time I walk into the door. The transformation in that school has just been remarkable, with just a few things that we done. So some instructional frameworks, just to talk about some of the things that we're doing within the school. Daily intervention groups, there's a term here, Hill Wrap. I will tell you, there's some philanthropists in our community that are raising money to actually put Hill Wrap in all of our schools. It's a intervention program that is research and evidence-based. There's actually a Hill Wrap center, but I will tell you, as of this point in the year, we've raised, this group has raised over $300,000 to actually deploy Hill Wrap throughout our K-5 schools. We're actually going to venture into using it at Alamoor Middle School. Another thing that we've done this year is brought in a national trainer for MTSS, is multi-tier systems of support, used to call, be called RTI, response to intervention, so students that are behind get specific intervention strategies. The state has toyed with this for about three to five years, and I actually, when I was in Montgomery County, we just pulled out of it because it was not effective. The individual that we're working with actually has been awarded several federal grants, she's working with the Department of Defense, and has worked very intently with our inner-city schools and some of our county schools. The biggest thing I'm proud of, our inner-city schools actually are outperforming some of our county schools, and that's generally not the case across the country. That data is flipped. So I congratulate all the hard work that's done in our inner-city schools, and I do want to appreciate the individuals that stayed tonight, because the biggest issue we have is getting parent input and parent support. We need a room full like this at every PTA and PTO meeting at elementary schools, to have their voice in the room, to let us know what we're doing right and what we're not, because it does matter. We do this together. There's not enough time in a day for us to teach a student to read without the input from a parent, or a grandparent, or a Sunday school class, and I would tell you, had it not been for my Sunday school class, I wouldn't have been the reader. been the reader I was. So, I started out in Sunday school, learned about phonemes and splitting words apart and whole, uh, word meanings. So, it does have a place in, in our society. Unfortunately, we see not as many people going to church or getting exposure to literature. And in the summertime, let's just face it, there's summer slide. So, if you're typically a parent of a student in poverty, you don't, you can't, you're not afforded to go to Washington to the museums, or you're not afforded to go to Greensboro or Charlotte, you don't have the money to do it. You're just trying to make ends meet. Some parents are working two and three jobs. A lot of times, these are latch kid, kids, or latchkey kids. So, anything we can do to provide after-school supports, um, is a big plus. So, one of the things that we went after, uh, and somehow, I don't know, uh, maybe it's a gift I have, but grants tend to follow me. They are a lot of work. But so far, in my one-year tenure here, we've, we're at six point three million dollars in grants. So, I don't, I did tell my board, but I didn't promise them anything. I put a disclaimer, we have about another four million in the cooker, actually more than that. If we get the grants we currently have out, we'll be at about fourteen point seven million dollars. But I have several more coming. It's a lot of work. So, I don't sleep. But the, uh, it, it gives me goosebumps just to think the money we can bring in to help kids because my passion, my love is helping children. Color is irrelevant. Uh, anybody who follow my career, I, I've closed the gaps in numerous schools, and that's my forte. That's my passion, that's what I love to do. I just have to work on the political side of it to make sure we can continue to do that. We had a great speaker in today, a national, uh, best practice speaker was in today to talk to about forty-five of us. Uh, he's going to be working with us in the future. But the after-school, the after-school grant, uh, we were awarded is one point two million dollars. It's four hundred thousand dollars a year for the next three years. What it does is provide an opportunity to serve two hundred and fifty-five students in K-five after-school, twelve hours a week, thirty-six weeks during the school year, and six weeks during the summer. So, that helps provide, uh, input in literacy and mathematics, so we typically don't get the summer slide. So, that grant is, is going. Matter of fact, we just had an audit the other day, uh, and basically they want us to come and present some of the things we're doing. So, we're in partnership with Scholastic too, with some of the curriculum. So, some great things going on there with this after-school, uh, grant, and we'll continue to get those and seek out other ones. Another thing, another grant that we put in place that's going to help us, um, we wrote a, a RUS grant, which is USDA grant, Rural Utility Service Grant. For you, that doesn't mean a whole lot. I call it telepresence. So, we'll be putting a telepresence in every school, uh, and we're doing a lot of, Appalachian is actually working with our high school pre-cow teachers because we had a gap there. So, with telepresence, the instructor from Appalachian, actually the dean of mathematics, actually beams in every day and watches a particular teacher each day's instruction, and then they regroup afterwards and talk about what went good and what didn't. So, it's actually a ver- a virtual tutor that Appalachian's providing, not free of charge. Your tax dollars are paying for that, but it's, it's a good, uh, good expense because it provides support for our teachers. We're actually, this semester, going to Math One, which is another gap we have. So, Appalachian's math department is providing that virtual support. Uh, the teachers, uh, have just had nothing but rave reviews for that process. They actually come into a boot camp with us with the curriculum to lay that out. So, this is going on at Albemarle High School, Albemarle Middle School also. So, the after-school grant, of course, our, uh, K-five schools. So, let's move on to the next one. Albemarle Middle School, here's some demographics. Of course, this is one of our D schools. We have two middle schools that are D. Um, and I know you guys in the past have had some, uh, I think there's been some debate about middle school concepts. I will tell you that, um, I could go either way on its K-eight or six-eight. I would just tell you, the middle school concept across our nation has proved challenging, and if you look at data in most middle schools, um, that's typically where your low performance is at. You have puberty, uh, the onset of puberty with trying to change the curriculum and become more like a high school, sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. You have to figure that out, uh, based on that student population. But it is a D school. And, uh, so several things we've got going on here that are pretty interesting. Schools that lead, if you want to Google that, it is a website. It is a national, uh, company that looks at improvement science. And their forte is going into at-risk schools across the nation and making drastic improvements to close the achievement gap. So, they are working with us at Albemarle Middle School and will be for several years to come. The Southern Regional Education Board is out of Atlanta, Georgia. They've been in business for many years, and they work with numerous research agencies around the country. They're also working with us through a Carnegie Mellon grant for the next five years at Albemarle Middle School and Albemarle High School. And what they're looking at is the transition between eighth grade and ninth grade and dropout prevention and some other things that, uh, happen during that transition between middle and high school. So, we're excited about that. We also added some additional supports at Albemarle Middle School. They have an instructional coach now. That's primary goal is to work with teachers on effective instruction. Um, so that school has been given some additional resources. Um, I'm not sure if I could commit to you tonight that that's not going to be a D school again, but there's a lot of things in place. Uh, I don't expect for it to continue to be a D school because of the resources we're putting in place. We're also rolling out Hill Wrap there for the first time in middle school for sixth and seventh grade. So, there's where we, uh, have a need to work further. So, there's good and bad here. Uh, Albemarle High School, I'm going to brag about this, very few high schools across the state make it to a B. Very few schools with the demographics and the poverty at Albemarle High School make it to a C. So, I will tell you, the C to me is like an A-plus. So, I can tell you, that does not occur. Uh, that's an anomaly. So, I also would tell you, there's probably some perceptions about Albemarle High School that, again, I would challenge anyone in this community to walk into that school. It's, it's one of the prettiest schools we have, and I have to deal with all the issues in the county, and I will tell you that I deal with less issues out of Albemarle High School than I do any other high school. So, there's perception that that's not a great school, but I'm telling you from sitting in my chair, I, I, it is a great school, we have a great leader, but, you know, let's just face it, great leaders make great schools, so do great teachers. So, when you, you got to think about the leaders you put in schools and make the right decision, it's not a simple decision. You have to look at many things. But, um, it had the highest, uh, grade level proficiency in five years. Biology is, is an area that's another, um, across the state, biology's about thirty-eight to forty percent, and this is because of Common Core and the re-norming of the test, and I can go into a hundred other things. But biology is one of those things that you have to continue to work on, and about the time we get it right, they'll re-norm the test. But again, here, we have several things going on. Uh, Smart Lunch is one of them. LDC and MDC, Literacy Design Collaborative come out of Bill and Glory Gates Foundation, and Math Design Collaborative, it's been around for about five years. Actually, Stanley County went and presented at the National Conference in Florida last summer, the things we were doing. So, we were also been selected out of, uh, the nation to continue a program with SREB in these two, um, areas of curriculum. So, some great things going on. Of course, we've added virtual presence there, which has helped us again in math, also to expand advanced placement courses and provide equity across our county. One thing I hear, we're not equitable, but we have the same curriculum guide that every school in North Carolina does. If we have enough kids wanting to take basket weaving, we'll offer basket weaving, but we have to have enough kids that want to teach her. Um, and we'll, we can also do this. If I can basket weave and beam it out to three other schools and collect enough kids at the other three schools, we'll have basket weaving. So, again, the world of education's changing. I think those of us who are older keep thinking that education's contained in bricks and mortar. That is not the future of education, and is not going to be the future of education. Virtual classes, I have multiple degrees, and I can tell you, the last two degrees, none of them were all face-to-face. As a matter of fact, some of my better classes, classes were with satellite classes or virtual, or just going online and doing it specifically online with the instructor. So, the old iteration of I have to have someone face-to-face, just think about Rembrandt. If he could, if he was here today, he could take telepresence and be in four schools. So, how much better would it be to have Rembrandt on a screen than it would to have someone who doesn't know art teaching you face-to-face? So, we need to get our best teachers before all of our students, not just a handful that's lucky enough to have that teacher. All of us grew up with a teacher that we can remember, and unfortunately, through my college career, I can name all of them on one hand, and I have about seven degrees. So, that's sad. But the face-to-face doesn't always work if it's not the most effective teacher. So, Stanley Early College, uh, I will tell you that Stanley Early College is the highest-performing school in Stanley County. In Stanley County, that's out of all schools. So, if you want the best education, you're looking for the absolute biggest challenge that you can get for your student. It's the Early College Platform. It's an A school. It exceeded growth. It's in US News and World Report, it's one of the top schools in North Carolina and the US. They've done over six thousand hours of community service. Actually, some of them helped us, uh, at Rotary Pack Barbecue one day, it was a great group of kids, very talkative, but they done a great thing, uh, that day, helping Rotary and providing for their community service. But, uh, this school is about three points from being a school of excellence, so they're at eighty-seven percent proficient. If they hit ninety, it's a school of excellence, they've exceeded growth, there are no other accolades than this. So, Stanley Early College, again, is providing, uh, a great education here for our students. And there's some exciting things that we have coming up. So, at Albemarle High School, I constantly ask about CTE courses. There's fourteen career clusters, or excuse me, there's sixteen career clusters in CTE, Career Technical Education. We offer fourteen of the sixteen. So, a county this small, we're able to offer almost everything every county in this state does. There's only sixteen, again, we offer fourteen to sixteen. Here are some of the classes we offered at Albemarle High School. If you look at CCP classes or dual enrollment classes, so we had sixty-eight of those, uh, in the spring, we had fifty-eight, uh, spring of nineteen, we had fourteen AP students enroll. We're trying to increase that enrollment through telepresence. I will tell you this, uh, I've done this for seventeen years, I've never seen a platinum of work keys earned by any student. Albemarle High School student won the top platinum award for Career Technical Education. That is not easy, and I've done this seventeen years, and this is the first platinum I have seen in CTE. So, that kid knocked the top off the test and knew what they were talking about. Certifications, credentials, our kids can walk out into the industry, into industry already with certifications that they would have to pay anywhere from two, two thousand to three thousand dollars apiece to earn at the early college, or at the college, excuse me. So, here is, here are some of the ones that were earned, uh, eighteen CPR, healthcare providers, and you can look at the list. Uh, thirty-one OSHA General Construction certifications, that's, uh, that leads into many other fields, so it's great. So, here's the timeline of some things we have planned. This semester, we started public safety at Albemarle High School. Public safety leads into about six different fields, one of those being firefighting. So, we plan on offering firefighting coming up in the fall, firefighting one and two. So, that will get that off the ground. Public safety, again, as I said, we can go into EMS, we can go into EMT, there are several different ways, law enforcement. So, theoretically, you could start in the ninth grade at Albemarle High School and take all the courses in public safety track, and only like two courses when you graduate to get your firefighting certification. That would be live firefighting, which we can't do on our campus for reasons, and hazmat. So, those two would be the only two you would not earn between ninth and twelfth grade. So, think about the impact of that. In that would be nine FEMA certifications you would earn going through that coursework. And these are all worth a great deal of money. The Teacher Cadet Program, we, um, presented, uh, Pfeiffer with the grant when we got here, it's four point three billion dollars over five years. It's called the TQP Grant. It was already wrote, so it was pretty easy for Pfeiffer, I handed it to them. The, but in Montgomery County, we didn't have a four-year institution, so we couldn't get the grant, so Montgomery is part of the grant because they need teachers also. So, the Cadet Program is pretty neat. What it does, it's, um, it helps prepare students that want to go into teaching. So, the Cadet Program is at Albemarle High School. We have twelve students that have started in it. We have twelve at North Stanley High School, and Montgomery is getting their program up and going. So, our grant over five years, we hope to actually push through about fifty students that come out the other end and remain here with us.
You've done about as good a job, I think, with what you have to work with, as, as I think I've seen. It's not easy. I don't think it'd be your job, but I think you've probably done about as good as one could do with four little high schools.
Well, you hit on that. We do have high schools of choice, starting next year. So, the IBCP program is starting at North Stanley High School. We've, we've gone through candidacy.
I'm, I'm not real hot on IB, I'm, I'm hot on CP.
Right. I like the CP part of the IB program much better than the IB. CP is Career Program, which offers those students that they take two of the IB courses that seal on their diploma, which does hold a weight at Wake or Duke or some Ivy League schools. IB is for seven percent of your, you typically take seven percent of your junior class, and that's your IB student. So, what we wanted to make sure, and I do, I do student advisory councils, as a matter of fact, several of the kids were on that. So, I go every quarter and talk to the kids. So, when I, as I went around to the high schools, what I heard loud and clear from North Stanley High School students was we need more rigorous courses, we need to do something to compete with Greystone, um, and there's room in the market for both. But we need to make sure we're doing the best as our public school system as we possibly can to afford equitable education. So, we're doing this, um, AP Academy, actually is a capstone academy at South Stanley. You have to take six courses in the AP, um, genre, and there's two completer courses that will be taught at South Stanley. And of course, we'll do the choice program, so if a kid, you can either do it virtually, we can either beam it into the school you're at if you don't, if you're, if you're a, right, because kids do get territorial about the school they're at. So, that's what makes it hard to say, come here for everything. The IB is the only program that we're, that requires you to be on that site. And we'll start backward building that, but I can tell you right now, we have twenty-two IB students, eight of those come back from Greystone. So, uh, that within itself is paid for the program. So, it's about eighty-five hundred dollars a student, so you can do the math. I figured that's about seventy thousand dollars, and that more than pays for the IB program. We're doing a STEM program at the Western in, uh, West Stanley High School. At Albemarle, we're doing the Early College. So, what we wanted to do is provide equity in education throughout our county and offer our students the absolute best they could get. And if you can't get it here, it's probably not offered, so, um, Dr. Bramlett's mentioned symphony, and typically part of an IB program. He can add a couple of instruments to what we currently have. I will tell you, the band program at North Stanley High School is probably one of the best programs they are. If I would put him there full-time and not have him go to the middle school, but going to the middle school, you sort of build, you sort of build your band program at the high school. Uh, he would love to start a symphony, I'll guarantee you. So, as the IB comes online, the CP program, we'll be offering additional things as we move forward. But again, just being able to provide certain niches for kids that want to do specific things, and that way, they can't say, they couldn't find what they wanted at Stanley County schools. So.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Uh, Dr. James, just to kind of echo what, uh, Councilmember Bramlett said, I want to applaud you. I appreciate your passion, uh, appreciate everything that you're doing to, to make Stanley County a more competitive environment as far as education is concerned. Do you have one question? You mentioned, uh, what is, what is high school of choice? Can you just elaborate on that?
Well, if you, uh, so what we'll do is transport you, we do every day anyway. So, if there's something not offered at your school that we can't offer, and you want to take it to another school, we'll transport you there. We, all we ask is you take two classes while you're there because if not, we'd be busing you back and forth each, all day long. So, we do bus, you take two classes at that school, so automotive's not offered at every school. So, if you want to take automotive, uh, we don't have that at North Stanley High School. We have a great ag program, we'll bus you to West or wherever there's an automotive program at.
Okay, now, and, and again, I've, I've graduated from Albemarle in nineteen ninety-two, and I remember between period, class periods changing, we had about five to eight minutes, periods changing, we had about five to eight minutes, something like that. How does that affect the students that are having to be bused all over the county for different schools?
We do it during this thing called Smart Lunch. So lunches change at our schools, and the idea behind Smart Lunch, here it was a little different, but it's been around for about five years, and I've done it in three different counties, and it's been done differently everywhere I've been. But Smart Lunch, in high school, you've got to remember, in elementary, you have time to remediate, or you have intervention time. In middle school, you have intervention time, but when you get to high school, you typically have four blocks and no intervention. So if you were falling behind in math, you just had to do the best you could to catch the teacher after school. So during Smart Lunch, instead of having two hours for lunch, we have an hour. So 30 minutes of that, you go to lunch. The other 30 minutes, you either go to get additional support in a classroom failing in, or you go to an enrichment activity. So during that time is when we do the choice busing.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up. There are a lot of things that are going real well, and I look at the Early College, and those numbers were just absolutely wonderful. Are we in year seven with Early College? Can you tell me? Is that where we are?
Yeah. It's more than that.
More, is it more than that?
Yes.
Golly, done.
And it takes a while. A lot of people want instantaneous results, but, and you know, in changing a culture, it takes about three to five years.
Well, Early College is just phenomenal. I know that you all have been talking, though, about the school year. And I'm, I regret that I'm having to ask this, but where are we in Stanley County about that discussion?
Well, we were part of a discussion with several other counties, and actually, the General Assembly has labeled their calendar rogue calendars. So I knew that, I knew it was going to happen with the General Assembly. The General Assembly in the state of North Carolina, starting in 2005, took over the flexibility of the calendar from local control. And they say it's because of tourism. So I've, I would like to see the breakdown. No one's ever presented any numbers. I would like to see the breakdown, because all you're really doing is shifting, it's still the same amount of time, you're just shifting when you begin and end school. But the tourist industry swears that there's $350 million to be made by, by doing the school calendar as it currently is, and starting the first Monday after August 25th and ending in June. We have to end before June 11. So they pretty well have mandated when we can start and stop, and took that away from local control. But what happens is, like this year, when we had all the rain and the hurricanes coming through, we have consumed all of our days before the first snow. So that puts us in a situation now, so pray for good weather from here out, because right now, if we have another day out, we're either going on Saturday, or we're going to have to add time to the school day because we're out of time. And so we need some flexibility in our school calendar. And what it's also done, we used to have about 10 professional workdays during the year in our school calendar. It eliminated five of those because it, it compressed our calendar, so we couldn't add them because of the start and end date. And those professional development days are very important for teachers. And as a young teacher, I can remember losing those, and I'm like, wow, you couldn't have done anything worse to me as a young teacher, but take away those five days that I needed to get caught up, talk to colleagues, plan for the next semester, do some other things. So the General Assembly is going to take it back up, because there's about 45 bills on the floor right now to give flexibility to all kinds of counties. We had our superintendent's meeting a week ago, and I'm in the alliance with Charlotte Meach Union. We actually represent the largest number of students in the state in the, the alliance we're in. We're in the Southwest RESA, and that's what I'm part of, or Stanley County is. And so 12 of the, or seven of the people at the table actually have the, they're going forward with the calendar that's year-round. They call it a year-round calendar. It's really not year-round. But they're going forward with that. The bad part of that is, if the General Assembly legislates against it, they can put a stay in place, and they'll have to revert back to the old calendar. So I did not want to put the citizens and the students in that predicament in this county. So I'm waiting to see what happens there. It could be really bad if they have to revert back because people have already made their vacation plans, et cetera. So it's, it's got heated up in the General Assembly. We'll see how it goes. My gut feeling is, it's tried every year, that we're still not going to get the calendar flexibility put back to local control.
May I follow up? In your professional opinion, not personal, but your professional opinion, is it not more positive for a student, a high school student, to finish up completely with the first semester before that?
Absolutely, because it's before Christmas break, and you don't have, remember, we have summer slide. We also have Christmas slide.
Right.
So, and the kids will tell you, you know, I forgot everything I knew during Christmas, and they're like, I gotta relearn all the stuff.
In three weeks.
In three weeks. It's a crash course in three weeks to try to remember what you learned or forgot during Christmas break. And so it also aligns with the community college and four-year universities. So if I graduate early and I have to wait, the statistics for those kids who wait to go in the summer, it, it impacts 5% to 7% of the kids who were going to go to a four-year not to go. So it's detrimental to students. It might be good for tourism, but it's not what's best for kids.
Thank you.
So.
I just have, just a quick question. Dr. James, what are your thoughts on year-round school?
Well, one of the board members asked that. So again, Charlotte Meach at my table, Union County, Cabarrus, so I asked them. Most of those are going away from it, and here's why. Generally, it's six weeks on, three weeks off. But the problem is, if you want to catch kids up, you've got to find the money. If the money was there, it would be, well, and when I say that, I say it tongue-in-cheat because I also talked to Charlotte Meach, he's on the news much more than I am, Clayton. He's a funny guy in person. But Clayton is, you know, when I asked a question, he says, well, we're moving away from it in Charlotte Meach because of the expense. Actually, Union County is Dr. Houlihan, and they had four schools that are still on year-round. He said it's costing them $200,000 a school to provide the additional supports during those three weeks. So yes, I would say if the money was there, it's an opportunity to catch kids up and not have the summer slide. But it all comes down to dollars. But it works if you have the money available. Now, I will tell you that Cabarrus has one left, and it's in Mount Pleasant area, and I forget the name of it. It's Wolf Creek Middle, I believe. We actually went to visit it, and it's still a year-round school. And here's what the superintendent said. Politically, if I tried to change that calendar, I would be unemployed and half the board. So it's working for that school, so if it's working, leave it alone. And that's his philosophy. So yeah, a lot of great things out there. Again, I feel my passion and I guess my talent or gift is, I can close the achievement gap. Everywhere I've been, I have significantly. It's just I have, you know, I have another job, and it's called political. So I have to, you know, I have to have the time to work with my team to give them the tools. And I think they would tell you that if I've done anything, is we've gone at it wide open trying to close the achievement gap by putting the right training in place for our teachers. What I heard when I got here was, no resources, there's no money. Well, you find money for what you want to find money for. We all know that. So we're putting the resources in, we're doing the right professional development, we're equipping our teachers to be master teachers. And you will see the results of that sooner than later, I will guarantee you. I'm very impressed with some of the things we've got going on. We had six D schools. When I went into Montgomery County five years ago, we had eight of, eight of 10 schools were D. They have one D school left. So it can be done, and they're 80% poverty versus 55 here in Stanley. So we can close that gap. Also, the other thing I didn't mention to Dr. Bramlett, we are starting a dual immersion program at Indy. We fired a teacher from Colombia, South America, not South Carolina. So she's, so we're starting dual language there, and excited about that. We already have 18 kids signed up. We can go up to 25 kids in that class. We, we think we'll be full. So we're probably going to hire the second teacher to get her ready to start first grade. So we're starting in kindergarten with dual immersion, which is a fantastic program.
Been a lot of discussion about open enrollment, and I think there was some of that tried years, years ago, to not great success. What's your opinion on that, and what do you, what do you see happening?
Well, I mean, there's nuances to everything. There's pros and cons to everything. But I think right now, if you really want to take your child to a specific, that's what we're trying to do with Choice Schools. So if you really want the dual immersion, we're gonna, we're gonna get you the, well, we're asking parents right now, if you want the dual immersion, transport your kid. So we have, so the Indy, even though it's at Indy, it's centralized location, we have parents from around the county going to go into the dual immersion program. So we're trying to do that with our high schools of choice. But I think if you go to open enrollment, you're, to my, my opinion is, you can always run into resegregation. I think you'd really have to watch that. Our transfer policy, I'm still trying to wrap my head around it, and we're trying to be more fair about it. But also, when you look at redistricting, you've got to be cognizant of lines and demographics, because you can also resegregate when you redistrict. So, and we, we hope not to do that. I'm not sure how good of a job it's been done, but it seems like most counties that the concentration of most your at-risk students or diversity tends to be in your city schools. That's just around the state. But I'm proud to say that our city schools are kicking butt. So, you know, so you can't say that city schools aren't doing what they need to be doing for students. So I'm, I'm just tickled pink over that and the work we've done at all the city, the inner-city schools. We've done it at all of our schools. But Albemarle High School looks like, I mean, it was a transformation when I drove by there, and all the bushes were gone, and we've done a lot of landscaping and cleaning up. And it's just a beautiful school inside. We do have older schools, you know, what you run into there. The board that's elected is for community-based schools, so therefore, I work for the board now. So if the board gets all voted out, and they're for consolidation, and I guess if I'm still here, then I would be for that. But I've done both. I've been in inner-city schools, I've been in lake schools, I've been, you know, where there's no diversity, and I've been where there's 95% diversity. So there's good and bad in every school. You're always going to have that. There's, there's no caveats that are perfect anywhere in this world. So certainly appreciate the citizens of the county's support. We definitely need your prayers. It's not an easy job. It's many hours. And the staff puts in a lot of hours, too, and couldn't do it without the great staff we have and the passion that we have in our teaching staff. They really truly want to do what's best for kids. Yes, Ms. Lauter?
Dr. James, I sit beside a doctor over here, and he's always bragging about what he's doing, and I see that you're doing the same thing, and that's good. Nobody else will do unless you do or some of your staff. There's one little thing I can solve for you, and it's very simple. You said you didn't know why the free lunches decreased as, as they got higher in school. I'll tell you why. They're ashamed. They get, they, teachers can't look after every little need of the kid, and they're, they know that they're getting free lunch. Now, when they're young in kindergarten, they do all right with that. But as they get bigger, are you learning?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have to figure out a way to make sure.
Figure out a way so that you know.
And we try that, but we can do a better job at it, and that's one thing our staff's working on. I have been in schools, believe it or not, Ms. Lauter, where the free lunch line was one line, and the other lunch was, you can't do that because kids aren't going to eat it.
It's about that bad still.
Yes, so we're, we're working on that. We've got work to do. I can, I'll be honest to tell you, we've got work to do in every department in our school system, but we're making inroads. Transportation's one of them. It's up to 89% efficiency, and we were about 72%. So we're working in transportation, trying to improve it. Every dollar we save in other departments ends up being a dollar in the classroom. So we've got to be efficient in our child nutrition and our transportation, so we can take those dollars and actually buy resources for teachers. Again, appreciate all you do for the school system. I would just say that the school board and I would welcome you to sit down with us in a joint meeting and talk about some needs of the schools, and hopefully what, what our vision is, strategic plans online, and then try to mesh that with what you guys are doing, and see what we can do together to make our schools even better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no unannounced allegations. Your administrative reports, monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, move on to new business. Number nine, consideration for a special event permit for rekindled ministries. This is not a request to close any streets. It is a request to waive the fee.
Is anyone here for that?
Probably not.
Neither from another county.
I see no one here.
It's $25, is that right?
It is.
Mr. Ferris, is that correct?
That's correct.
So even with them having it on the property of the YMCA, we, they would still have to...
We, that's, that's correct. They submit a special events permit to the city because when you have larger gatherings, there are potentially some law enforcement needs, some fire safety needs. I think this event may have a tent associated with it, so there's inspections and just things such as that. That's why there's a fee, and it's a pretty nominal fee, but, you know, we, we couldn't waive it at the staff level really if we get into the habit of just waiving a lot of fees, maybe we do waive with it.
Is this, have they done this before? Has this organization, I know there's been such a type of this in the past, but has this organization done this before?
It doesn't ring a bell to me.
Okay, it didn't with me either.
I noticed they're out of Mount Pleasant.
They are.
I have no idea. Do not know.
Mayor, were you expecting a delegation? Is that what you said?
Normally, we do.
Normally, someone shows up.
Maybe it's so late, they left.
What's the date on it?
25th of May.
Maybe give them another chance since it's late.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do, let's do.
I entertain a motion then that would continue it.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Lauter. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, consider extending street name of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to North Second Street. This is Mr. Townsend's request.
Yes. I asked that we put, have this put on the agenda. I think most of you may know, we first changed the current portion of Martin Luther King Drive from East South Street back in 1995, 96, somewhere around in that timeframe. I might, I may be off on my year, years a little bit, but it's been a while. One thing that we faced some opposition with during the original request some years back was from the bank and the law, law office, I think it was Tucker-Slaughter Singletary, because of the fact that they may have to change a significant amount of their stationary and things of that nature at the time. You know, it had initially passed on when we first brought it. I wasn't on council, I just came as a concerned citizen during that time with another, with a delegation from the community. But it had originally passed for the full length the first night we came. And then, back then, they, the city used to do what they call first and second public hearings. And when we came back, that's when it got modified from the entire link, and they ended it right there at Fourth Street, you know? It just sends a bad image as you, as we growing as a city, as you come, that boundary is somewhat sends a speculation that is separating the black and the white community, where it goes from Martin Luther King to East South Street, you know? And I, I ask, now that the bank is closed and the lawyer office is no longer there, that council reconsider this and making it the full length, to changing it from East South Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Drive.
Doctor, was it, I'm sorry. Was it always, was it going to First Street back then?
Was it going to First Street?
Because the bank?
It was intended to go the entire length of the East South Street, and then, you know.
That's West South Street, between Second and First.
The request is Second Street here. Is that, you want to go to Second Street now?
To wherever East South Street ends.
East South Street doesn't end to Old Charlotte Road.
Yeah.
No, that's West.
I mean, South Street. East South Street winds at Second. West South goes all the way around. You want to end, you want to rename East South.
To Second Street.
I personally would have no problem, but we do, I think, need to set a public hearing too.
I knew that would be the process of public hearing, because now is the perfect time, you know, while the bank, bank is not occupied and the lawyer office is not occupied.
I have two, two, two observations about it. I think that I had always started in it at Fourth Street because the original Albemarle was South, North, First to Fourth. That was the original land grant that, that defined Albemarle, and I thought that was that. That's just an observation. Number two, I'd do all of South Street if you, if we're going to do it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a one or two-block street, which we would have if we, if we[1637.91] we ended it at First Street or even at Second Street. There only, from First Street, there's only one additional block there.
Goes all the way short. Goes all the way. I think we should just set, set the public hearing, because then we would know what kind of opposition it's going to face again. I don't think it goes, like Mr. Townsend, I don't think it'd face much opposition there. But if you do go to the next part, you are going to affect some businesses again. So they may, they may oppose it again.
When, as early as we can set a public hearing.
We got, we need to send property owners, I would say, second meeting in March at the earliest.
Yeah, that's all.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, set a public hearing for March 18th.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion.
So is this going to, so is the, based on what both Mr. Townsend and Dr. Bramlett have said, are we going to look stopping it at a certain spot or going all the way down to Old Charlotte Road? I mean, are we, I mean, because you're going to, we're going to need to be specific on that, particularly if we're sending out letters. So where are we stopping it?
The request is the Second Street.
I know that, but based on just what Mr., what, what, Dr., what Chris Bramlett just said, he thought we needed to do the whole thing. So if, if we're going to, well, I just think we've got to be specific as to how far you're going down.
Actually, no, no, let's, and I'll be honest with you, I think our, so that we don't face as much opposition, I would, I think we probably need to consider stopping it at Second Street. You know, because I think our chances will be somewhat slim, and I.
Is that Railroad Street?
But then what's, but then what is in front of Stanley?
Hardware.
Hardware. That's, that's still South Street.
I think that's where you're going to face your resistance, is changing business names.
Yeah, I would say, I would say Second Street.
Well, he didn't ask for that.
No, he, his request and motion is for Second Street.
Oh, okay.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, close the CKA project budget and transfer remaining funds. You have a description in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion?
I couldn't really tell where we're going to transfer money. Where are we transferring it to?
In the next one, you will see the ordinance to transfer it.
Right here, ordinance 1905 is going to show it exactly.
You're, you're moving it from the CKA project budget into the public utilities fund. They're going to do the transfer switch and offer the generator at Old Whitney.
I have a question on the 1905.
All right, we're on the number 11 first. I have, I have a second.
Yeah.
All right, a motion, second on number 11. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Now, number 12, ordinance 1905 to amend the physical year 1819 budget. Ms. Hughes?
Question on, I understand the 3,002.80, I get that. I think that's for the fire department. I guess I'm, I'm not understanding the 19,500. I see it on a expense and a revenue, and I'm just trying to figure out what, why, I guess I don't understand the, I see the 72,459 and the 19,500 equals the 91,959. I'm, I'm missing a 19,500 there somewhere. I don't know what that is.
It's up the top.
No, I know that.
It's in water, it's, it's within that other water sewer. We had some money left over from the CKA project, which, which was a water sewer project. So that money's going back. Included in that figure is another 19.5 that it will be increased from property, not, interest income.
Okay.
In water sewer. There's also 19.5 in.
It was odd it was the same amount.
Yes, it is. It's from both, and it's because Keller Partnership, somehow, in all the budget process and trying to get things balanced, I believe I cut something I shouldn't have. So now that we have additional interest income, that, rather than take anything out of fund balance, we're increasing the amount of interest income and we're going to spend it on the Keller Partnership that should have been in there to begin with.
I think it says here, Keller Partners Retainer. Okay.
Move approval of 1905.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, consider sale of surplus city property. This is the property we discussed and put up for a 10-day upset bid. That has cleared the 10-day upset bid now. We can formally accept that, but we will not close on that because we have to get the survey and all and get the unopened portion of that street closed and then do all that recombination survey before we can actually close on it.
But we can formally accept the offer today.
We'll formally accept the offer.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, add my police department annual report.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, Mr. Ferris. You have in front of you our annual report. I would certainly not try to go through the whole thing tonight. If you would, please take this, go through it. If you have any questions, please contact myself or one of my officers, and we'll try to answer any questions you have. I'm going to just hit a few highlights that are in this report from this past year. First of all, each, each division does their own section in this report. My patrol shifts do a section, my detective division does a section, my training division, they all do their own report. So if you have a specific question about a specific section, you know, if you can direct it to them, they'd be better off to answer it. First thing I need to let you know is there, there's some changes in our numbers for this year, mainly the way we tabulate statistics. In the past, we've done incident-based reporting, or IBR. During 2018, we had to switch over to what they call NIBR, National Incident-Based Reporting System. The FBI wanted every department, law enforcement agency to switch to this system so that they could better compare statistics if everybody's collecting them the same. This affected a lot of our numbers because the reporting method is a little bit different. For instance, in the past, if we went to a, a fight, two people were fighting, and then one of them went over to a car, took a ball bat and busted out a car window, that would be one report. Well, now with the new, it's, the NIBR system, that's two reports. There's one report on the fight, and then there's one report where they broke out the car window. So it breaks things down, and it, it'll add to our number of reports. The numbers will be a little higher, and we just switched to this approximately the middle of last year. So the numbers next year will be more comparable to the, 2018, 2019 will be easier to compare than 2017 versus 2018. But overall, we extraed 20,021 calls last year. That's an average of 55 calls per day. It's an increase of 4% from 2017. We did 3,139 incident reports, which was an increase of 14%. But part of that increase is going to come from that switch to those, that new reporting system. However, we, we have seen an increase in our activity, so some of that report increase comes from just being more, more reports. We did over 3,000 arrests last year. We recovered $373,000 in stolen property, which is double the amount from 2017. We doubled the amount of heroin we seized this past year versus 2017, and the amount of cocaine we received, seized last year was tripled. So we've increased our drug seizures in both of those areas. That's probably not a good statistic, because there's more out there, but we are working hard to, to address it. We doubled the amount of money we seized last year during those drug arrests. We seized over $30,000 last year. Probably the most alarming statistic to me was that in 2017, we seized 59 firearms during the year. During 2018, we seized 99 firearms, almost double the amount of firearms. Our officers are getting firearms on traffic stops and drug arrests, and almost double the amount they were the year before. There were 11, 1,127 traffic accidents, which is an increase of 4% over the previous year. I hope that when DOT gets finished with 2427, that number may drop down a little bit, but a lot of our traffic accidents this past year were over there on 2427. And the only other statistic I have is that in our evidence storage room right now, we have over 10,000 pieces of evidence that we're tracking and are stored there. There's a lot of data in here. If there's any questions, again, please let me know. We'll try to answer them. Yes, please.
Just a reference, so yesterday, Charlotte Observer, seven, eight, 10 pages, talked about guns, 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 guns. And you just made the comment that you're, that you're taking, I mean, are possessed, getting them this past year increased. Were most of them possession of firearms by felons, or some of them that? Or when you did for your drug arrests, had them, what was the basis?
A large number of them were possession of firearm by felon, and I'm going to say the majority were drug-related gun possession arrests.
Further questions, council?
Thank you.
There's a lot of information for you to digest. I'd encourage you to look through it.
There is a lot here. Are you available Monday if we have any questions? Can we call you?
While you're there, go ahead and conclude your statement, since this is your last meeting.
Yeah, geez.
We can't call you Monday?
You're probably on some beach somewhere with an umbrella drink.
God, what?
Just might.
Just saying.
Got it, mate.
Yeah, just saying.
Since you asked.
Since you asked. This will be my last council meeting.
As chief.
As chief.
As chief.
As chief.
Or anything else, right?
I won't take much time, because I know everybody's ready to get home, but I do, would like to say a few things. Number one, I've been blessed to work for the city of Albemarle since 1990. This has probably been the best job anybody could ever ask for. I've been a patrol officer, dare officer, detective, and accreditation manager, and assistant chief, and of course, currently the chief, and I love my job. Now, why do I love it? Is it because of the stress and the excitement we get from it? No. It's mainly because of the employees I work with. They are my friends. They are my extended family. I don't have a lot of friends outside of work, and the ones I do here, I consider them my family. I enjoyed working with them. I'm looking forward to spending time with my wife, spoiling my grandkids, playing some golf, and probably being on a cruise ship or two. And some of you may know, some of you may not, I recently found my birth mother, because I'm adopted, and I'm going to spend some time meeting my new family that I haven't met before.
That's awesome.
But tonight, I wanted to say thank you, especially to the mayor and council for supporting our department, giving me the opportunity to be chief, and moving ahead with the new building that the police department's going to have. To Mr. Ferris, for the guidance and support during the past few years, and for having the confidence to allow me to be the chief. To the community, for their support of our department and our officers during the good times and the not-so-good times. We have a great community, and our officers appreciate their support and the prayers that we've received. To the other department heads and other city employees, for helping us out every time we called and asked, and for working together to make Albemarle the great city that it is. And to the employees of my, the Albemarle Police Department, thank you for the dedication and hard work that you've done. Without all of you, none of the things we've accomplished in the last few years would have been impossible. And lastly, and most importantly, my wife, who has supported me and been there for me during my career. She's put up with her missed birthdays, anniversaries, late-night phone calls, and just overall put up with me. I couldn't have done this without her. Thank you to all of you. I wish you the best as you continue to work hard to make Albemarle better for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Number 15, reminder, the Santa County Cog Meeting is in Oprah on Tuesday of next week, February 26. We will meet in the parking lot out back and leave here at 6 o'clock if you want to ride with the group. Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
I do not have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend?
Two things, Mayor. Number one is, and I'm sure Dr. Bramlett will probably elaborate on it, but one is a reminder to the listening audience of a program that's coming Sunday, sponsored by the Stanley Historical Society, where Dr. Bramlett's son, Louis, Louis Bramlett, will be doing a presentation on notable African-Americans throughout Stanley County, and that's at 2:30 PM at the E. Waddell Community Center. Last but not least, council, at some point, I would like for us to consider recognizing the Albemarle Girls Basketball Team. This group of young ladies, they, I don't know if any of you had an opportunity to watch them play yet this year, but if I'm not mistaken, and I, I'm not sure, I assume they won tonight, and that'll make them around 24-0 as far as conference play. And Mr. Baldwin, you know their overall record, what is it, 20? They lost one game, I know. And I think that, if I'm not mistaken, maybe one of the best records for a girls' basketball team in Albemarle's history. And so that's worthy of recognition, maybe at the conclusion of their season, you know, we.
When's the playoffs start?
Playoffs start Wednesday at South Davison, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Miss Hughes?
I just would like Kevin to add, and this may already be on the list somewhere, but the house at 919 PD Avenue, which is at the corner of PD and 10th, it's bad. It may already be on the list somewhere, but just, okay, good. I wanted to, I've had a couple people bring that to my attention, and I know we've talked about this, and we've talked with Ross and, or I'd like to get the tour of the landfill, the new employee facility, on the calendar at some point, for us to go out and see how pretty it looks. That's it.
Mr. Aldridge?
First and foremost, I just want to thank everybody for, for coming out. Most of them already, have already gone home, but I wanted to thank everybody for coming out and let your voice be heard, regardless of what your, what your position is. It's important, and it always, it's always good to see the public come out and express, express your feelings. So thank, thank you to all that, that came out tonight. Also, I noticed, I was driving down West Main Street the other day, and I know right beside the railroad crossing there at Market Station, I'm not sure, is that Norfolk Southern? Who, who manages that? Do you know? Anybody know?
Across, it's across the street?
There's a metal box right there. It's right beside Market Station.
That's Norfolk Southern.
Somebody has, has put graffiti all over that. I don't know if anybody's made anybody aware of that.
I think they tried to clean it one time. I think it used to be a color. Now it's kind of like a silver color.
You're right, it is. Okay, so I just wanted to, I didn't know if there's anything we could, because I hate for, for folks, you know, the, the wine festival down there, and then the bananas that's coming up, and just people riding through town in general see that and it looks bad. So last but not least, anybody have an update on the completion of the 2427 project in front of Walmart?
Well, they're moving on. The weather hasn't stopped them. If you remember, a couple weeks ago, they were saying it would be sometime into spring, but right now, the weather's not cold enough to stop them. As long as it's not raining, they're continuing to work.
Okay. All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
Ms. Hall?
Last week, at one of our budget meetings, we were, I think, I was shocked whenever my constituents up here didn't realize what jeweling was. I have, I've got, I have requested from DHHS some wonderful information to pass out to you all about that, because it is huge. It is truly huge, and I want to make sure that, that folks know about what that is and how bad that is for folks in there that say they're not smoking, but they're jeweling. Other thing is, is I just want to ask Chief Oak, what happened today, this morning, out at the Christian Ministry? Because I, I was downtown, and I heard fire sirens and trucks going, and I didn't realize that's where they were going. I headed that way, and I saw two or three units out there.
So we got dispatched for a haze and smell of smoke in the building. Turned out, it was a HVAC unit in the back of the building that had an electrical problem and put some smoke in the building. So they took the unit out of service, informed them to call maintenance, and they were good to go.
How many, how many people responded to that? Probably one and two?
Actually, it was our whole department, and everybody was at work today, so it was 13 on duty, and then myself and the fire marshal.
I saw a lot of vehicles over there. Thank you very much.
Chief, if you don't mind me asking, were there a couple times today where we had multiple situations? I know we, we talked earlier at a, at a meeting this week about sometimes how we spread out a little thin. Was there, was there a situation today where multiple, I mean, where we were all at different places at one time?
Yeah, they've, they've had a very busy morning. I think we ran eight calls before early afternoon, and actually, this morning, I believe it, don't hold me to it, it was around 8:15 to 8:30, they had a fire alarm at the Taylor House, which is over on Palmer Street off of West Main Street. So all our units were over there. And then we got dispatched to odor of gas in a house on Berry Avenue, which is right beside of East Elementary School. So I responded to that, because I was still at Station 1, and the latter truck came back across town to that, and I, I'm not 100% sure, because I was paying attention to the call I was on, but they also dispatched a medical call on McGill at the same time, and I think they had to release a unit from the Taylor House call to go to the McGill call. So we, we did have three back-to-back incidents this morning. And then we also have had numerous medical calls. We actually had a house fire on Smokehouse Lane this afternoon, had the back of a house catch fire there, so all our units were tied up on that side of town for quite a while this afternoon. So, so yes, I have had a very busy day. So you probably heard a lot of sirens around the city today, so.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Whitley?
Just a reminder, Saturday afternoon, Winter Wine Festival, Stanley County Winter Wine Festival at Market Station, that afternoon. Remember to go if you're. uh, that afternoon. Remember to go if you're so inclined. Also, um, Dexter mentioned the program Sunday afternoon. I've been really upset that I have missed the last, I don't know how many of those. Is there any way those can be videoed? Do they record any, do they video any of those? Historic standing?
We used to do them by, uh, with the community college, but that has not been done lately. I, I think they could consider something.
Man, I know for me, for one, I, because so many of them are gone.
They're excellent programs.
Oh, yeah.
Even though my wife plans it, I can brag, they're, they're wonderfully done.
Further, Mr. Whitley? That's it. Mr. Bramlett?
I, one of the things concerns me, we used to have this big sign out at high school talking about Albemarle pride. I'm sure everybody here has, has seen that meme that goes throughout our town. But you know, as I, I drive around town, we're a trash dump. It is awful to drive on any of our highways and streets and just see the garbage that's lying around everywhere. At the same time, I got to give whoever's credit with that sweeper and all right in the middle of downtown. It's not that way. It's very nicely kept. And I, I don't know how they do that, but, but we've got this, this center part here that's, that's very clean, neat. But the most of our town is a dump. And I wish there was some way we could instill in our citizens a little bit more pride to, to keep their places looking better. Yards need to be mowed, uh, sidewalks need to be trimmed. That's, and I know that's the responsibility of the person living next to it and that sort of thing, but it, it pains me greatly to see that. And I've been doing health treatments and I hadn't been able to get to pick out trash. And I'm dying to get out there and pick up some more. And I'd invite everybody here to join me doing it. But, uh, that, that's all. I just, let's talk about Albemarle pride.
Ms. Ladder?
Uh, just one thing, and I had, maybe you'll take it personal instead of, uh, I've heard a lot about Benton Dry. He's my friend also. He lost the race. I really don't think he needs to be considered for anything that this council wants to do. I won't serve as long as Martha Sue has. I would be 100. 98, 98, Martha Sue. I don't plan to serve that long. It'll be his time again. But I know even talking about something continuing with Benton and, and, uh, well, why can't I think of your name? I love you to death.
Me?
You. Yeah, something that they were going to continue and ask Benton to, to do it. You did that in, uh, one session. I like him too, but he lost. Now, they brought that out tonight in, in one of the, I don't know what, what his intent was, the real estate person about that we made such a mistake. And that's the words he used when we didn't elect him this, this year. It well may be a mistake, but I'm going to try my best to be a good member on this council. And by the way, I just sold some real estate and he wasn't my choice as a realtor either. So, um, you know, it goes both ways and I, I just hope that I can satisfy the, the members of this council. And when I'm not satisfying you, it's not, I don't want it to be because I'm not like Benton. Benton's my friend too. I hope you don't mind me saying that.
Well, if I may respond to that, since you, since you brought me into it, um, you know, I, I respect, you, you, you did win the election. You won fair and square, no doubt. But I also think it's very closed-minded to, to not offer. Benton was a great council member. He added a lot to the city. He did a lot of good things for the city. And I think it's very, um, I, I, I think, I think when I come through that door to, whether it's an open session, closed session, my ego, I try to put, I try to put the ego aside. And I think for us to, to, to say about Benton Dry that we don't need to consider him for any future advice or consideration or anything like that, I think that's very closed-minded.
Okay, so I'll accept that. I'm closed-minded.
If, if, if that's the way you feel, then that's the way you feel. But I think that any, anybody, anybody that can offer us advice, assistance, anybody in this community that's willing to get involved for the betterment of our community, I think we need to be open-minded to that. Whether they served five years ago or, or five months ago, I just think it's very close. I think we're getting on a slippery slope when we start saying, I don't need that, we don't need that person's help. We don't need that person's input because we all pay tax, we all live in the city. But again, that's nothing, that's nothing personally against you, Shirley.
Oh, no, I'm sure.
That's just the way it's, that's just the way I see it.
Anyone in the audience have anything to come for council? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, March 4th, 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?